Lexi Smith from St. Andrew Russian Greek Catholic Church will lead us in the invocation and Councilmember Brand will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let us pray. Blessed are you, Lord, God of all creation, for through your goodness we have given this wonderful season of spring with Passover and of Easter which the earth and its inhabitants are renewed. May this evening's meeting of our city council evidence this time of spring, a time of renewal. Renewal of commitment to serving all segments of our city, both residential and commercial. Renewal of commitment to seek the greater good of all in service to our city. Renewal of commitment to unity of purpose for our city while respecting our diversity in needs and aspirations. Renewal of commitment to freedom of expression of opinions and respect for both individuals expressing them and for those to whom they are addressed. Renewal of our commitment to work together that El Segundo may be second to none. Renewal of commitment to those of our residents who are less fortunate than are we. Particularly for renewal of commitment to one another, so wondrously demonstrated for us by Mayor Suzanne Fuentes and Councilman Mike Dugan, who will soon be leaving this council. Be we mayor, city council member, member of city staff, police or fire department personnel, educator, resident, or businessman or woman, together, may we labor in this city for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Smith. All right, this evening we have several special proclamations. I'm especially excited to read this. Whereas, May 2018 is National Older Americans Month, a time set aside annually to commemorate and celebrate the significant contribution older Americans have made to the community of El Segundo. And whereas, El Segundo is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements. And whereas, older Americans possess and share a wealth of experience, background, and history, making them one of the city's most treasured and enduring resources. And whereas, older Americans are available, capable, and enthusiastic to provide volunteer services that contribute to a coordinated, community-based system of social, emotional, physical well-being of not only other seniors but the community at large, and thus an important part of the ties that bind both family and community. And whereas, recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments. Whereas, Betty Jacobson was nominated by her peers as the El Segundo Older American of the Year, a recognition which identifies, inspires, and promotes community involvement and a spirit of giving back to others through volunteerism and community engagements. Now therefore, on the 17th day of April 2018, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018, Older Americans Month 2018, and Betty Jacobson, 2018 El Segundo Older American of the Year, and hereby recognize the Elderfest Celebration Saturday, May 12, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Jocelyn Center to recognize Betty Jacobson and other senior citizens who have given generously of their time and talent to improve the quality of life for all in El Segundo. And I am so excited because Betty Jacobson is very dear to me, so it's my honor to present this to her, and I would love the whole council to come down and take a photo with her. Does family like to join us?
Stand next to each other. Yeah. All right, here we go, a couple of photos. All right, thank you.
I'll say I'm for Betty. Oh.
No, I'm not very good at public speaking, but I will say that I consider this to be such an honor. There are so many wonderful people in El Segundo that really contribute a lot of time, energy, and effort, and don't get this kind of an award, and I am very humbled, and I thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
And I, thank you. And I would have to second that. When I first approached Betty about the award and, you know, told her that her peers had nominated her, she said, "Not me," and, you know, wasn't going to take it initially. And she thought about it for a day, and like Betty, she said, "I just didn't do anything." And so we kind of talked and, you know, I was saying, "She's just a great presence in town, and you see her oftentimes walking with, you know, her white hat that she joked about not having, speaking with her daughter today, and realizing that, you know, I had her kids at the teen center when I worked there and rec programs, and it's just, it's a good family, and it's what we kind of look for in El Segundo." So, thank you, Betty, and thank you for all you've done at the Jocelyn.
We have a wonderful, by the way, we have the... They are all great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a second proclamation. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to Nebraska, to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Arbor Day, celebrated nationally on April 27, 2018, will be commemorated, excuse me, commemorated by the city of El Segundo with the Tree Care Celebration on April 28, 2018. And whereas, this holiday was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce living oxygen, giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and benefit our community. And wherever trees are planted, they are a source of life, joy, and spiritual renewal that bring people together as neighbors. And whereas, a result of our city's commitment to our community forest, El Segundo has been named a Tree City USA since 2003. And whereas, El Segundo Arbor Day celebration events have been presented annually since 1988 by local youth, and in 2018 marks the first year of a renewed partnership with the Tree Musketeers, The Next Generation. And whereas, Tree Musketeers, The Next Generation, in partnership with the city of El Segundo, is conscientious business citizens, service clubs, and residents, tall or small, will care for trees in Memory Row on April 28, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. in observance of El Segundo's 31st Arbor Day Celebration. And whereas, this Arbor Day project further signifies the city of El Segundo's commitment to the community, the environment, and the fight against global warming. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California, join with communities in proclaiming National Arbor Day as April 27, 2018, and invite all citizens to join Tree Musketeers, The Next Generation, to otherwise honor all trees and the young people of our community for the important roles they play in improving our hometown quality of life. And then we have, accepting the National Arbor Day proclamation is Sebastian Hanson, the Tree Musketeers, Next Generation.
We can all take a photo with Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor Fuentes and city council members. It is my honor to accept this, the First Annual Arbor Day Proclamation. My name is Sebastian Hanson, and I'm a youth manager at Tree Musketeers, The Next Generation. This proclamation is part of the bond that Tree Musketeers, The Next Generation, and the city of El Segundo share for our love of trees. Trees make El Segundo a better place to live, and we have good reason to celebrate our green friends with a special holiday. We, they create an ecosystem to provide habitats and food for local wildlife, as well absorb gases, most notably carbon dioxide. In doing so, they release life-sustaining oxygen into the atmosphere. With their beauty, they make our community both financially and aesthetically rich. This year for Arbor Day, we are expecting around 200 volunteers to care for the trees on Memory Row along Imperial Avenue. Mulching our green denizens and removing invasive plants are our top priorities. In two short hours, we will have spruced up the northern border of El Segundo and made it more welcoming. With the help of Chevron, community contributors, and the city of El Segundo, Arbor Day will certainly be a success. Tree Musketeers, The Next Generation invites you and the El Segundo community to our First Annual Arbor Day on Saturday, April 28, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 at noon. Investing in Tree Musketeers, The Next Generation sees a timeless vision of youth planting trees and becoming new leaders for social and environmental change. Thank you to everyone for sharing our dreams and participating with us. We know everyone plans to make this, the First Arbor Day Celebration, a wonderful event for the El Segundo community.
And we have a third presentation. Kimmy Rayly, El Segundo PTA Council Vice President for Fundraising, is going to tell us about the 27th Annual El Segundo Run for Education. Hello, Kimmy.
Hi. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you, Mayor Fuentes, and the city council for allowing us to close the roads and use the city for our event. It's for PTA council, so it goes to all the schools in El Segundo School District. So we raised about $80,000. So it is on Saturday, April 21, and it starts at 8:00. And there, we get about, close to 2,000 runners we're expecting down there. So this is just really a time to thank you guys for the use of the police force, and we really couldn't do the event without your cooperation. So I hope everybody registers. It's www.esrunforeducation.com, and we need volunteers too. So if anybody's interested in volunteering, we would love to have people help us set up and run the event. So, well, I will leave those with...
Thank you, Kimmy, and thanks for all the volunteering you and your team do to produce this event. It's really wonderful, and a lot of people in town are part of it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Firstak?
Here.
Councilmember Brand?
Present.
Councilmember Dug?
Here.
Mayor Protem Boyles?
Here.
Mayor Fuentes?
Here. Now is the time for public communications, related to city business only, five minutes per person, 30 minutes total. If you'd like to speak, now is your time.
Good evening, Mayor, and Madam Mayor, and Protem, honorable councilpersons, and to all of you here and watching from home. My name is Tracy Miller-Zarnicki. I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Environmental Committee, and I'm here on behalf of the committee to wish everyone a happy Earth Week. And to celebrate this event, we ask everyone who hears this message to please make one change, to do something greener in your lifestyles or your workplace in recognition of this special week. Well, a good example would be maybe helping Tree Musketeers this coming Arbor Day. But here's a few other examples just for people to consider. To our residents, do you use a reusable water bottle or coffee cup? Do you really need to use a disposable straw in your beverages? Have you checked that your sprinklers are only running after sunset and before sunrise, and that they're not watering sidewalks and other non-planted areas? To our office owners, do you have water bottle filling stations or, you know, old-school water coolers for your employees? Does your office go digital with its documents, such as much as possible, or does it print double-sided when printing something is mandatory? To our restaurant owners, if you feel you must offer straws to your customers, can you switch to paper, or at least not hand straws out unless requested? And you offer more eco-friendly takeout containers other than those made of styrofoam? Many options nowadays to consider. And these are just a few suggestions, and we have many more. If you want to come talk to us, we'll actually have a booth at Farmer's Market this week, our third annual time to be there to meet with the public who wants to talk about green things. At any time, you're also welcome to check out the ES Green pages on our city website. They have lots of great ideas involving holidays, regular days, every day you can think of. There's something you can do to be greener. So with that, I just want to say before I go, since I probably won't be back up here before the turn of the council, I wish you, Mayor Fuentes, and you, Councilman Dugan, all the best in your life outside of this room, and I look forward to seeing the rest of you here, along with your new counterparts, to talk more green in the future. So thanks, everyone, for your time, and come on out. Yep, hide that bottle. Do come on out and see us this Thursday at Farmer's Market if you do want to talk other green ideas. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Tracy.
Hi. Good evening, council. I am Sarah Wayland, former president of the Library Board of Trustees and current library board member since 2013. I speak to you tonight in regard to the Agenda Item Number Nine under New Business Review by Council of the New Proposed Designs, the library's new Wi-Fi and reading lounge renovation. See over there. We are all very excited for this new project, as it will create a new, bright, modern, and welcoming area for library patrons. With new desks, tablet-arm seating chairs, counters, lounge seating for at least 52 people, and the addition of multiple electrical outlets, cutting down on the current danger of having cords running haphazardly across the library floor. I know that Mark and Carolyn will be giving their presentations later on in the evening with more specific background information. But the Board of Directors wanted council to know that we believe it is important that our recommendation for the color and style be heard as well. Therefore, the Board supports a recommendation of going with the classic design furniture style with the possible option of bringing in the coastal color scheme. Thanks for your time.
Seeing no more public communications, we'll close. Council comments?
I just want to say typically I have a reusable container up here, Tracy. So I feel busted, but I'm heeding your comments. Thank you very much about making those changes, and thank you, Sarah, for taking the time.
Yes, thank you, Tracy and Sarah, for representing both of your committees and being such committed volunteers. All right, procedural motions, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
On move.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Pose, five zero. Thank you. All right. First item, Special Order of Business Public Hearing. This is time and place here to forefix for a public hearing. Consideration of Possible Action to Conduct a Public Hearing to Consider Adopting New Fees or Amending Current Fees and Service Charges and Other Amendments to the City of El Segundo Fee Schedule Not Including Water Rate Fees, Sewer Rate Fees, and Development Impact Fees. Fiscal impact potential additional revenue for fiscal year 2017-18 of $104,500 and $602,700 in fiscal year 2018-19. Fiscal impact, N.A. Manager.
Mayor, members of council, staff's recommendation is that this item be continued to a special meeting to be scheduled for April 30. That's a Monday at 3:00 p.m. If there's anybody here that cannot be here on April 30, they have the opportunity to provide their input tonight.
Thank you. So if anybody wants to speak on this, they can come up now and speak? They're not going to be here on the 30th with us? Okay, seeing none. All right, so a motion to continue?
On, so moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Pose, five zero. Thank you. Reports of committees, commissions, and boards, consideration of possible action to support the request from the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee to allocate $45,000 to fund the 2018 El Segundo Art Walk to be held on the third Thursday during the months of June, July, and August of 2018. Fiscal impact, $45,000. The attorney?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem and City Council. This presentation will be about El Segundo Art Walk. As you all know, the event is growing and it's very popular. So this evening we have George Renfro, who will be doing a presentation with regards to the El Segundo Art Walk, and he does have the support of commission, of, I mean, the advisory for arts, the Arts Advisory Committee. I'm sorry, it's a long title. So he does have that support as well. So George, would you like to start it with your presentation?
You can ask questions during...
Well...
Welcome.
Thank you, guys, for hearing us out. I thought the new, when I was strategizing for this, I thought it was going to be the ... So now, like, all my jokes for Scott Nickel aren't really going to work.
It's the old council.
Don't let that stop you from...
No, it's an honor. So I want to talk about where the art walk started, where it is now, and where we see it going, and benefits we think it has for... Okay, thank you. So, El Segundo Art Walk, or ESA, as we call internally, is an independently organized, self-guided art event. Creative businesses throughout downtown El Segundo and Smokey Hollow transform their spaces to allow Los Angeles-based artists to showcase their work. Attractions also include food trucks, live music, beer, and wine garden. It takes place throughout downtown in Hollow, and here we sort of creep another street east. It was founded in 2015. It was originally with Polly Socrates and just a group of creative businesses in town, and it's really kind of spread ever since, and it's the third Thursday of June, July, and August, the summer months, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Our mission is to improve the local fire culture, create economic opportunities for artists, galleries, and businesses in El Segundo. I want to take specifically last year and talk about a few points. So when we first launched our attendance, I think our 2015, we just had a couple hundred people come out, but through word of mouth, 35 artists, 30 businesses telling their friends, attendance grew each year. And last year was the first year that I took it over with a new committee, and we really tried to get some new press for it, and did a pretty considerable job on that. Granted, all of our hours are pro bono on it, and we really haven't found a way to fund it. It's been, we do get some funding through registration fees. We've had a couple private businesses in town, some small sponsorship, but really we're at sort of a stalemate with growth and figuring out where we go from. We're coming to you guys and have a financial plan. Some major highlights from last year is really how it transforms downtown. We had a couple, we had two of the bigger restaurants record their highest gross in sales on Art Walk Thursdays. There's been a couple artists who, to me afterwards, just almost shaking with happiness. They've sold all their original pieces, and they've sold their prints. And last year was when we really started to take some data from some of the visitors, and there's people coming from San Pedro and North Hollywood and Santa Monica, and some places that are really known for their art and their culture, but they're coming to El Segundo on a Thursday, which really gets us excited. So really, we're here to talk about the future, and we see it going one of two ways. It could stay like it is and probably come to a halt and fortunately die because we can't find a way to motivate people to keep working on it. Or we can really get behind it and double down and create a cultural destination. I think El Segundo is going through an amazing change right now, and see it in Smokey Hollow with the creative businesses, and I think if we have an event that the city's behind to spearhead that, it could help us in more ways than one. So to create this cultural destination, we have some things that we're doing internally from the Arts and Culture Committee and the Art Walk Committee. But if we look to the city, we'd really love some help with some local and regional marketing, some increased investment with, to build out our then-infrastructure, to really make things safe. And then we've learned that a headquarter venue is really something that we need. It gives people a place to meet up, and people always show up, "Where do we start? Where's the map?" So something that really focuses on a central venue. Feel free to hop in if you guys have questions. I'd love this to be an open forum. So for this event awareness, we'd really like to just focus on some local and regional marketing, both digital and print. Everything up till now has been pro bono, built a website, branded it myself, printed everything, my printing company at cost, so really try and find a way to make that a little more sustainable. As far as the event infrastructure, we set up our main venue last year. Drew actually graciously let us borrow his space, and I was pulling couches out of my garage and my coffee table out of my living room, and borrowing trucks from friends and using heavy rocks to weigh down our lights. And so I think that the safety and the comfortability could be bumped up a little bit. And then as far as this headquarter venue, I think this would solve a couple things that we've, some issues we've run into in the past. Alcohol being one of the main ones. The first two years were sort of the Wild West, where businesses were handing out beer and wine, and everyone loved it, and it was the greatest event anyone's ever been to. Then the ABC kind of gave us their little wink last year and said, "Hey, we'd like you guys to curtail some of this public, well, drinking in public. It's just not going to fly." And I think with Smokey Hollow not having streetlights, there was just some safety issues. So we tested this last year with building our own central venue and funding that, and found that it worked. So I think this year, just trying to do it right. And then, yes, some goals for 2018 is really just pump up attendance, refine our artists' and venue process, which is something that we'll do internally. But for us coming to the city, we're really focused on attendance in a headquarter venue. So to the fun part, our asks from the city will be both funding and property. Next slide. We are asking, this document shows $45,000 over the whole event, and I know that's a huge ask, so we've... So, we've shifted around the numbers and maybe we thought about shrinking our headquarter venue and tried to make this a little more, a little easier to stomach. I've socialized this idea a little bit with $45,000, and I think it was just too much. So, but I think this, I don't want to turn this into a, "Where do we go with this? What is this number?" It could go in circles, but I think we're just really sort of opening up and saying that we know that this is something that big value to the city. How do we make it work? And this idea, even bringing the art walk to the City Council, was something that was put into my ear from a couple liaisons at the Arts and Culture Committees, saying that, "Hey, we have this funding that's set aside from the hotel tax for tourism marketing, and we're paying a marketing agency to help with event or city tourism, whether it's someone just landing at LAX, or someone that lives in Santa Monica, or someone that's coming from another country." So, I think we see the big value for the city as being able to spend a decent, slice off a chunk of that tourism marketing revenue and give it to the art walk and really see the benefits in a number of ways. So we've broke down, I was kind of scared that we were just going to stop on this slide and spend two hours talking about it. So I broke it down at a high level. We can go drill down into these more if we need to. But really, this money's going to go into that main venue build-out, figuring out how to make that safe and our advertising. So we're doing things right. We'll bring in tenting and fencing and bathrooms and really create that central social hub. Things that the money won't go towards is pairing and acquiring these artists and venues, any of the corporate staff, myself, any office expenses, any food or beverage at the main event, web development, design, all the stuff that we've sort of been handling so far. As far as this property, this is sort of our main footprint for the art walk, where things are busiest, usually with foot traffic. And I showed this map to Arts and Culture Committee a couple meetings back, and one of the City Council members suggested... Sorry, next slide. Suggested this parking lot next to the fire station. Nice thing about it is if people vibe a little bit too much, the police station's right there, so we can handle that. And this would really be our location to really show people that the art walk is happening tonight, and it would give a great place for an activation for us for live music and... Live music and, excuse me, food trucks, and a lot of people walk down Grand and Main, and people could flow right in from Farmer's Market, which takes place on the same night. So, there's a lot of perks to that. Not sure about the city situation with parking, but I'm sure you guys could sort that out. We could, let's skip this slide. So, I think for this to really make sense, I really want to focus on what these benefits could be. I think art is tough because it's subjective, and it's, well, we're going to give money to the art walk, but we don't know if everyone likes that art. But I think this event is more than that. This is actually a video. Can you click on it? We have audio. Yeah, it is. Just click on the, on like... Just anywhere it should start, but, okay, no worries. Well, let's skip to the next slide, so poor Ralph doesn't have to get freeze-framed like that for too long. I'll try and paraphrase what Ralph is going to say. He's an artist that showed at last year's art walk, and he was so inspired by the event that he's gone into Hermosa and started his own art gallery. And he thinks that the art walk is really aspirational for the entire South Bay and really spearheads this shift that culture that's going on in the South Bay and El Segundo. And he feels like it's really put us on the map. So, I just wanted it to come from someone else's mouth, not mine. But I think really, El Segundo is going through this big culture shift, and I think if we have an event to get behind that, I think it'll really, really help us out. I know I mentioned this idea of tourism marketing, and there's a huge campaign for a city for tourism marketing can become really expensive, and then it's this sort of obtuse marketing of a city in like this bigger statement of, "Come to El Segundo", in very vague terms. But I think with an event like this, it's very concise. It brings people to town that don't usually come here, and it shows us off in a great light. And then, this, the last benefit, I think is the most important if the city were to get behind it. And that is really businesses' love for this event. I think a lot of the businesses that partake in it, maybe they don't necessarily care so much for the art, but they care for the exposure that they get. There's 40 businesses that stay open late, get visitors to come in that wouldn't usually get them. I mentioned the restaurants that have, show a lot more revenue on those nights. And if you walk through Manhattan Beach on any Friday, it's bustling, it's got that traction. El Segundo still struggles with finding that in its downtown. It's getting better, of course, but I think the art walk can really provide that and provide, put us on the map. Every time we talk about the Arts and Culture Committee, about marketing the city, it's, "How do we make ourselves Instagrammable?" And I think something like this, like, really gets people out that don't usually come. So, shopping this around a little bit, it's, it always comes back from a bureaucracy standpoint of how to, what's the success? Or what's the success criteria? How do we know we're going to have an ROI on this contribution? And I really think it would come through attendance and the business revenue. But then there's this intangible idea of a reputation. I think El Segundo is obviously an amazing place already, but really put us on the map for wanting to come here for their free time or being here for creative exposure or something. I think that's where a lot of that falls. It's tough to put numbers on it, but I think there's an education there that's really important. So yeah, this last slide, I really just want to emphasize, if we can't figure something out, we're going to have to veer to the left. I mean, there was two or three nights in a row last year that I wasn't sleeping, and I think this ESTV interviewed me, but I looked so homeless, sort of like I do now, that they didn't put me on the bit. Like, the guy who ran the whole thing, they're like, "We're not showing him. He looks insane." Because, because it just, it wore me out. And, I mean, I'm an entrepreneur too. I get it. If it doesn't make sense, then it doesn't make sense. But this is sort of us just opening up and saying that I think we have opportunity here to do something great. And it would be, with this funding, it would be much more than it was in the past. And that funding would go towards growth and domination, and yeah, us taking over the world. So, I'd like to, on that note, I'd just like to thank you guys for the opportunity and open it up to discuss, an open book.
Thank you, George. Questions, comments for George? Yeah, so go ahead.
Alright, I'm going to apologize in advance, George. You know I tend to be pretty analytical. Do you have a sense, first off, I know you did a count last year for the first time? And how many people, you noted that people came from out of town. Do you have a sense of how many do not live in El Segundo?
It's like an, let's say, it's like 75% El Segundo, then 25% outside of town with still, with an emphasis on the south.
Okay, so, a couple thousand were of the attendees who were from outside El Segundo?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, the other question I had was the hotels, was there any... I mean, I could see potentially this event getting to a point where people actually come here, stay the night for the event.
Right.
Was there any cross-promotion or activity with the hotels here in town last year or the year prior?
There was not. We actually talked to ALLOF about having sort of like a closing summer event with them, and they're really excited about the event, and I didn't even know it until our last event, but I think there's some opportunity.
And then, Barbara Voss Department or EDAC, did they express an opinion about this event? Okay, I would like to hear what they have to say at some point, for sure. So it sounds like you want the 33,000, looks like we want to get a couple thousand visitors, and most of that money... Well, actually, that table you put up there looked like about 10,000 for marketing specifically over the three months. Does that sound alright? 3250 a month?
Yes.
So, it seems a little not quite ambitious enough if we're wanting to spend $10,000 to get 2,000 additional people here in a three-month period. So maybe you could speak to that a little bit more?
Yeah. I think, I think that we have some media partners set up where we would get upwards of half a million impressions. And I think that that money would be well-spent. I think the attendance numbers that we have for sort of proposed attendance, those are still rather conservative. I guess I just didn't want to over-promise, but if we had 2,700 people last year and we put some time and effort and money into marketing this year, I think we could double that. And I think doubling it would really be our goal. I guess I just, I wanted to keep it realistic.
So, that was one of the lists of items I have for success criteria. Media hits, you had 17, it looked like, last year. So really, for me, if we could get media hits, impressions on your website, whatever you build, and social media, along with attendees outside of El Segundo, and we could get the hotels to participate, and we could somehow measure success year over year. Are we moving the needle on this? To me, from an economic development standpoint, it makes sense to me to want to invest in this. I don't know about the dollar amount, because I think we're also, if the city was giving that land up, I don't even know if we can do that, Greg, but dedicate a parcel of land like that for an evening from a liability standpoint. That's obviously got a lot of value too. I just, I get a little concerned about, you stated early, art's objective. This is really more of about an event that draws people to our town, which I love, but also being fiduciary responsible for, you know, constituents.
Right. So are you saying your concern is all visitors from outside of El Segundo?
No, I love that. I think the more we can do that, the better. That would be one of the success criteria that I look for. I'm just saying that the amount of money, I'm still trying to get my head around the use of funds, the $33,000, and what would that, how much of that is marketing specifically? How much of that could be sponsor participation as well?
Right. Yeah, we definitely are considering the private sponsorship. I think we wanted to give the city the opportunity first, just because I think it'd work out better for us. I think that the benefit would just be a little bit more direct to the city, whether than trying to appease a private party and figuring out how we work them into the event. And then, I don't, I just don't think the number is high. Private sponsor, so I think, I think we're open. If you guys have concerns about where do you want this attendance to come from, whether it's local, it's South Bay, or if it's LA, or if it's Southern California, we're open to that conversation.
So it'd be, you'd be open, so I think you're suggesting the city is like a title sponsor almost?
Yes.
So we'd get co-branding as well? Logo recognition?
Definitely. Yeah. Yeah, I think from a marketing perspective too, El Segundo is in the name. As this event grows, you know, Laguna Art Walk is something that's very known. It's put Laguna on the map as a cultural powerhouse, really, and people know when that event's going on. I'm doing some of that tourism marketing already with this event, and I think that the city gets to benefit from it. So, yeah, of course, we'd love co-branding, but...
Thanks. I think I met my maximum number of questions for the evening.
Well, and my questions also go along, the whole sponsorship concept is that, was your, what's your like long-term plan for this? I know you guys, you're saying you had a crossroad, so you need an infusion in cash to determine the path you want to take, which is growth. Is your intention, though, over a period of time, like the next two years, three years, that you would garner more sponsorship opportunities and then a cost El Segundo would go down? Like, what is your intention? Like, is this, are you coming to us asking for us to help you launch into that pathway that you want to go with intention to, in future years, go garner sponsorships now that you can showcase what the event is?
Yeah, I think that's a great question and a great thought too. It would essentially be what you said of, this would be an investment for the city, and then, we'd love to grow this event year, year over year, to get more attendance, and then it's going to be more appealing to sponsors. And then, ideally, I don't think our ask in 2020 would be $100,000 from the city, unless it really made sense for the attendance and the business that it brought in. But yeah, figuring out a way to fund this thing, partnering with the city, and then ideally lower that cost in the future.
What's the event? Is it 3rd Fridays, Abbot Kinney? Or what's, 3rd Thursdays? The Abbot Kinney, they close down?
First Fridays.
First Fridays?
Yes.
Not even close. Anyway, how many people do they get, George?
Oh, tons.
They've been doing it like at least 10, 15 years, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so they've been doing it for a while, and I think Venice is sort of, downtown LA does one too. They, they've been known for their art and culture, so I think they sort of have a leg up on that. But as far as attendance, theirs isn't as curated as ours. Theirs is sort of just like, stay open late, all the businesses on one street, get all the foot traffic. I think ours is, the art walk's tougher because there's so many different streets and businesses that partake in it. 40 businesses, they really like to be on the map that's passed out. So, I think there's a little bit more curation that goes in ours.
And the three, the three months or the three different events you do, do you see that changing at all in the future? Is it pretty set, the summer months, three events?
Well, if I had an easy button, I think every month would be great, but every month of the year. But it's just too much work at this point. That's something that we've talked about internally as a committee, Art Committee, but hard to do. We talked about maybe doing a winter version of it. About it.
Thank you.
So I do have one more question. So, if we did grant the money, where would that money be going to? What entity is it? Are you creating a 501(c)(3)? Is it going to the Arts and Culture Committee to spend the money? Like, where's that money going to reside?
It would go to an LLC belonging to the El Segundo Art Walk.
Yeah, like, just, you know, the whole thing, this art thing is new to me, right? So you have to, I'm married to a photographer who's gifted artist, right? So, and opposites attract, so now you know where I come from. And I'm, and my record is saying, you know, a cultural event for me involves either a referee or an umpire too. So those are, those are some baselines for how this knucklehead thinks. Beyond that, the first art walk I went to, and I don't remember which one it was, but it was a casual walk-through where we got to go through, and this was earlier on when you went to different places, and there were, you know, you were getting a beverage at different places, and it was very casual, very impromptu. I enjoyed the hell out of that, because I am a craftsman, and there's a certain, there's a certain section of the art that involves craftsmanship, and I really enjoyed that. So I really enjoyed that. The last couple we've had have been more structured, more, you know, I would kind of think that we're maybe over-regulating it in some, to some impact, but I didn't enjoy them as much, right? So my initial thing was, well, this is something that really, you know, city recognition and bringing people to the city is good for the city, but it's really good for the businesses. Those are the guys that benefit from it. And my initial thought was, you know, we shouldn't be dedicating any city money to this. So, that was where I, you know, when I read it and I was getting ready for it, and I says, "Yeah, that's what I'm going to say", and then I go, and then George, you surprised the heck out of me. You go, "Why aren't we spending our tourist money on this?" And that was, that's a brilliant idea. I think that is. I think because that is the essence of what this ought to be doing. And it kind of, it comes to me from the EDAC side of things, is the businesses ought to be supporting the heck out of you. And if they're not, we ought to help engage, you know, make that happen. But that's a brilliant use of that kind of money, and I would fully support engaging EDAC and everybody else to be the supporting entity to this, to make sure you get what you need going forward. I think we ought to get them to commit to it. I mean, they've been, they squeeze us left and right all the time. We ought to be able to get some influence on them to come together, and that ought to be the group that generates the revenue for you, because they're the ones that are going to benefit from it the most. Everybody benefits from it, but they're going to economically benefit from it. So they ought to fund it. So I think I really like the fact that you brought that out. I think your team here does a great job of putting this thing on, and I hope it becomes more casual and goes back to the early days, so I can enjoy it more.
Me too.
And I used to call it trick-or-treating for beer. And I, I used to call it trick-or-treating for beers almost the first time, but but it, it was, it was really, it, it was a very casual, a very low-key event and it was, it was a lot of fun and, and I would do that every time, so. Last two, last few, not so much.
Guess the ABC doesn't like trick-or-treating for beers, Mike. Is that?
No, don't invite them.
So what is, um, Greg, what would, to Drew's point, what would the, um, the use of the land where the parking lot is for the fire department? What, what would that take or entail? How, what would that entail and how, how is that, is that probable?
My understanding of the presentation is they want to use the property, but they also want the city to fund some of the temporary improvements, uh, that are going on the property. They also want, uh, mentioned, um, alcohol consumption. So typically alcohol consumption on city property is prohibited. We do on a case-by-case basis bring these before council and the council has the ability to waive that prohibition. Drew asked a question about insurance with, with, people using city property, typically we like them to provide the city with insurance and indemnification. I suppose if the council wants to accept the liability, we could accept the liability and use our insurance, but we typically ask the, the promoter of the event to provide a temporary insurance policy or coverage to the city.
Yeah, we would be comfortable with providing insurance.
I think that we have, um, through the ICMA, I think that, um, Joe? Do we, do we still have special event insurance available through the ICMA for people that want to get that for individual events?
Yes, we do. So through our insurance pool, ICMA, um, vendors can actually purchase, um, an insurance policy just for a day or two days, whatever length of the event is. It's pretty reasonable in price. Um, also the city's, um, liability insurance will not cover alcohol-related events. So if the city were to cover this with our own policy, something were to happen, um, city would be on a hook, not the, uh, insurance.
Thank you. Dr. Brand? Oh, well, first I want to thank you, George, and your committee. I think that the Art Walk are three of the most delightful evenings of every summer. So you've brought so much to our town and, and kudos to Holly for starting this several years ago with her committee. Um, we have been partners with this with our shuttle. So I'm concerned about turning the parking lot over because parking is already at a premium downtown, so I hesitate to give up all those parking spaces. And I, I do think this is a valid use of tourism dollars. And we want to bring people to town. So I like your idea of a headquarters or your suggestion of a headquarters. I just don't know that that parking lot is a place for the headquarters.
Has there been any discussion, Greg, with, between Arts and Culture and EDAC about the Phelps Agency and promoting this event?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Not, not on a, not on an agenda. That's an agenda item, no.
Okay, I don't, I don't know how we're going to tackle voting on this, but yeah, I would, I would propose that EDAC, you know, helps develop the success criteria for this because we're doing this as a tourist thing and they're very focused on that, George. Their whole, they have a whole subcommittee working on that. And then we look at media hits, impressions, attendees, particularly out of, um, city, maybe hotel participation. We get them to help define the success criteria. I'd feel more comfortable allocating funds and also if we're paying Phelps anyway.
Right.
And this is, what I really like about this, this is a newsworthy hook and we're always struggling to find out, you know, we got the LA Times recently, but what's the next hook? And this thing gets a lot of momentum. Seventeen media hits without that much effort last year, arguably, right?
Right.
So a lot of room for upside. So my ask would just be that you work with EDAC to define those success criteria before we allocate any funds whatsoever, would be my ask.
Mayor. Instead of, uh, the parking lot and losing the parking places, could the center be the courtyard here? It's even closer to the police station in case anybody
You go in the front door?
goes awry. Uh, but it, there's no parking places there, there shouldn't be, so it's just a half a block away.
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yeah, uh, the epicenter is a little further south of Franklin and, and Maine, so we'd like to keep it as close to that, but I think, I think if that's the compromise, we'd be very happy with that.
Oh.
And as, as far as Phelps, uh, I, I work a little bit with, with their head of PR. Helped out already, so we're, we're pretty familiar with working together and she might even have data for us that we can file.
So are you suggesting that we don't vote tonight on this, that they work with EDAC first?
No, maybe just contingent that we, we approve the funds contingent on George and his group working with EDAC, coming back and defining the criteria and presenting them to us to agree upon.
That way they can get going.
I, I worry that we get too knotted up going back and forth here because this is going to happen real quick, so.
Maybe it doesn't have to come back to us, but just that they work with EDAC to define.
I would say that I would be comfortable guaranteeing the funds and then rely on us to put the pressure on EDAC to fund it. And then we'll just backstop it in case they don't. That would be my two cents on this is I'm, I'm in favor of it. I want to support it. EDAC ought to be the agency that supports it and they ought to be able to help get business sponsorship and everything else into the system and, and generate their rev- generate the funding for it, but if they can't, we ought to backstop it. So I'm, I'm willing to commit to the full thirty-three thousand in backstopping and then it should be less than that to the city when it's all over and done with.
So not to exceed up to thirty-three thousand?
Well, yeah, but what they're asking for is, I want to support it. I, I want to support it. I want to make it successful, but we need to put the heat on EDAC. They need to start delivering something back to the city and, you know, they're
I think they've been delivering a lot.
You know, I'm
Well, they've been, they've been, there's been a little bit of self-serving in that too, so.
You've come a long way, Mike.
I move approval.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. Thank you again for all your efforts.
Thank you, George. Very good.
Arts and Cultural Committee.
And thank you too. Thank you to Sally too, who's in the back. She's the chairman of the, of the committee and to the whole team that's put this together, so thank you very much.
So just so it's, it's clear for the record and for staff and I, the council's approving the use of the city property, the temporary alcohol consumption on city property, the thirty-three thousand dollars, part of which includes waiver of some
He skinned a thousand bucks off you already, didn't he? Did you hear that?
I heard this probably out here.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three thousand dollars, some of which includes, um, waiver of permit fees.
Yeah, I'm not totally in on the alcohol, but there'll be a whole nother council in two weeks, so they can
Yeah, it won't happen in a year.
So.
On your watch.
Yeah. The next watch.
Alright.
Thank you. Consent agenda, do we have any polls?
Can I clarify one thing? Sorry, mayor. Who's providing the insurance? There was a lot of back and forth there. We, we, they're going to re-provide the insurance.
The promoter's going to provide the insurance.
Two million dollar general liability, additional, okay, additional insured, the whole nine yards, okay, thank you.
And as far as figuring out the, the alcohol and property, should I set up a, a separate agenda meeting for, for next council meeting?
For the council meeting after that, on the fifteenth.
Yeah. You don't, don't let us slow you down, George. We're going to
And I know that there's been, uh, previously there was partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, so I think just making sure with EDAC and Chamber of Commerce, I think the three partners can really produce a, a really well-oiled event.
And the LA Times, LA Times can be the title sponsor of this, right?
Story on all that.
Well, and if the Art Walk is being given funding, maybe it's, it's less responsibility for the chamber. They tend to do a lot of heavy lifting on things that they're involved in, so. Consent agenda polls?
Move approval of consent agenda items three through seven?
I'll start it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Thank you. New business consideration and possible action to approve the Recreation and Parks Department Capital Improvement Project, CIP, recommendations for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen as prioritized by the Recreation and Parks Commission. Fiscal impact, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I see our Director of Recreation and Parks, Meredith Pettit.
And mayor, members of council, um, Meredith will present this item, but just as a, a reminder, this was a decision that the city council made during strategic planning and budgeting this last year, which was to address specific maintenance issues in our parks that had come up and for staff to work with the Rec and Parks Commission to prioritize those items. Uh, Meredith, Meredith and her staff went the extra step of, of conducting a survey of the community to determine priorities, priorities and, and Meredith will uh, speak more to the process and make, and the recommendations being made by the staff and commission, uh, joint effort.
Thank you very much. So to get started, um, again, uh, reiterate some of what Greg just mentioned, but in the current budget, uh, seventeen eighteen fiscal year, uh, the city council approved a, a couple of projects, uh, related to parks and recreation facilities. Um, and these are coming out of the developer impact funds. Uh, eighty thousand dollars was allocated for the hockey rink renovation and fifty thousand has been allocated to design services in, uh, related to Acacia Park and uh, as you know, there's a, a Public Works pump station project over on Acacia Avenue. The playground had to be removed as part of that. The playground needed to be removed and replaced anyway, so we want to, um, definitely, uh, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll be engaging a landscape architect firm to help us with a design process uh, to really design what, uh, the community wants at Acacia Park. Uh, also the city council approved an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, two hundred thousand from the general fund and fifty thousand from the developer impact fund uh, to unidentified projects and, um, wanted the Recreation and Parks Commission to weigh in and prioritize those projects. So over the course of the last three or four months, the Recreation and Parks Commission uh, has gone through a prioritization process. This was a brand-new process for the commission, so uh, really starting from scratch and determining what's the best way to, uh, identify needed projects and also score and value and rank those projects. Uh, and community input was one of those, uh, ways in which we collected input. Uh, by the end of the presentation, you'll see, um, the consensus on the top ten needed improvements uh, related to parks and rec facilities and then also, uh, final recommendation for three projects to be carried out with the funds allocated in this fiscal year. Regarding the community input, uh, Recreation and Parks Facility Needs Assessment, this was a survey that was put out to the community. Uh, it was actually at the same time that the Lakes RFP Task Force was convened. And so this survey really, uh, served double duty. Uh, we wanted to, uh, identify unmet Recreation and Parks facility needs and also obtain community ranking of possible capital improvement projects, so we could get their input on what projects they felt were most important. Um, the survey opened on January eighteenth, closed on February twenty-first. And during that time, we had five hundred and seventy-nine responses. Um, over eighty-seven percent were else identified as El Segundo residents. About five percent identified themselves as non-residents and about seven percent, um, were, were unknown or didn't indicate their zip code. So the first question, uh, that we asked was really just kind of a lead-in question to get a better idea of what parks people were frequenting the most and what they felt as far as satisfaction level. Uh, so it says, indicate which parks and recreation facilities you or any members of your household have visited in the last twelve months and rate your overall satisfaction level with its condition. Um, we can see that our most frequented parks are actually Library Park and just the general playgrounds and open space of Recreation Park. Um, this chart in front of you, I do want to, um, mention that, uh, the percentages are a little bit different. Um, the way that the survey was conducted was the fourth, um, the fourth, uh, category that they could check was did not visit this facility. So the percentages actually are taking into consideration all responses, even that fourth response, if they did not visit the facility. Um, but basically what we found was that Library Park and Campus El Segundo Athletic Fields uh, are actually, um, the highest in terms of, uh, our visitors being satisfied with their condition.
So when was this done? Just after we put in the new fields at campus?
Yes.
That's what I figured.
That would be much different if it was before. Um, and then another question that we asked, um, was do you or any member of your household have any parks and recreation facility needs that the city is currently not meeting that you would like El Segundo to provide? So again, you have the more comprehensive results in your packet and you can see these were open-ended responses. Um, and, uh, what the software program, the survey, uh, program provides to us is a text analysis on those open-ended questions, so they pull out uh, certain words or phrases that are mostly used. And overwhelmingly what we could see, uh, this word cloud is basically the larger the, the print on the specific words indicates the more those words were used. Obviously, we don't know, you know, field or parks, if it's saying, we love the fields or the fields need help, so it, it just gives you a visual representation. Again, you have the comments in, in your packet. Uh, but overwhelmingly we found that, um, that the more recurring comments had to do with needing more baseball fields, more soccer fields, more sports fields in general. Um, this question, uh, was would you support park and recreation-related nonprofit organizations or private businesses being developed within a public park that resulted in additional funding that helps to operate and maintain the park? So you can see about almost seventy-five percent were either somewhat very supportive of a partnership that would provide additional funding to operate that park. Ten percent indicated they were not supportive of that type of partnership and fifteen percent were unsure. And then this is really, um, the key point in, in what the Recreation and Parks Commission used in determining their ultimate rankings uh, was that, uh, we had a list of about thirty projects in this survey and asked the respondents to rank, uh, we asked them to do up to ten, one to ten, or, or guided them to rank their top ten. The survey, um, software didn't limit it and it also, so it didn't require them to go up to ten and it didn't limit them to ten. So some of them could put, you know, their top three and stop there or rank all thirty if they really wanted to, but at the end of the day, they could only rank number one once and number two once. So, uh, it basically takes those rankings and provides, uh, um, a weighted score, um, providing this output for the top ten ranked projects. Um, the plunge renovation is number one. A second, you have add multi-sport fields, which is really, um, feeds back to that other question of that open-ended, what's an unmet need? Uh, shaded playgrounds and shade at the athletic fields were number three and four. Adding restrooms at parks, um, this is something that we've heard a lot from, particularly, um, from parents who take little children to the different parks, is that they decide which parks to visit, which playgrounds to visit based on what facilities and amenities are available to them and restrooms being a top priority. Um, a splash pad, uh, is something that comes up quite often, is something, an amenity, a new amenity that residents would like to see. Uh, upgraded playgrounds, which we know, we have a, a, a pretty good idea of which playgrounds, um, need it, uh, the most. Um, several, probably two or three of them are, are very, very old. Uh, Richmond Field renovation, this is a field, uh, that's on school district property, but lacks facilities. It doesn't have snack bar concessions, storage, or probably more importantly, restrooms. We've also had conversations in the past year or two with Little League on providing, um, space to their Challenger League and lower-level leagues um, that have better access. Uh, beach amenities would be something new for the city, um, utilizing El Segundo Beach and developing some sort of amenity, whether it's a playground, a picnic shelter, or a fitness area. And then did the development of outdoor trails, which is something that we've identified, uh, the Imperial Strip or Memory Row as an opportunity or also, um, the land on the western border of the city, the Sand Dune area, in partnership with other agencies. So ultimately, the Recreation and Parks Commission, uh, like I said, spent three or four months, um, going through this process and really developing what the, the right steps along the way would be. Uh, they received a list of over thirty projects from staff, which was compiled based on previous community engagement, efforts, surveys, um, community meetings, also staff identified projects as far as where we felt really needed renovation or repair. And also any that were, uh, over, over the years suggested by council members or the commission. Um, we further developed the descriptions of those projects, the scope of work and worked with Public Works to uh, try to estimate as best possible what, um, possible budget would be for each project. Um, there was a subcommittee that was created, uh, with two members of the commission that worked with staff to create an evaluation worksheet. And that evaluation worksheet really took, uh, a series of questions, um, to, to help score the, each individual project and it, it really touched on Parks and Recreation core values, who the beneficiary would be, what types of fiscal impact or future fiscal impact that, uh, that project would have. Um, the Community Facility Needs Assessment Survey, uh, was conducted. The Community, uh, Facility Needs Assessment Survey, uh, was conducted. Also using the evaluation worksheet, each commissioner decided that, um, they wanted to independently rank each project, so they took those, that homework home and, um, scored each project individually. Also, I, uh, commenced a group of Recreation and Parks staff. Uh, we got together one afternoon and also went through each of the projects and scored them, and brought that information back to the commission. Uh, ultimately, we narrowed the project list down to twenty-three projects, and, uh, basically, we removed some projects that were better suited for, uh, maybe a general maintenance plan, such as exterior painting of a building, uh, or maybe the, the scope of the project wasn't yet fully developed, or maybe it was just a kind of pie-in-the-sky wishlist item. Uh, and then, at the end of the day, on February twenty-first, we had an open discussion at Recreation Parks Commission meeting, and the, uh, consensus was reached, uh, using factors such as funding sources, the scope of the work, the ability to complete the project. All of those things were, uh, taken into consideration in their final rankings. So, um, based on the Recreation Parks Commission meeting, the top ten needed improvements, um, for Parks and Recreation Facilities are the plunge renovation at number one, uh, the clubhouse renovation, Jawsen restroom renovation, the Acacia playground construction. So knowing that we will be having a design in place this fiscal year, they wanted to make sure that, that the council is well aware of funding will probably need, be needed in the next year, um, to complete that project. Uh, teen center upgrades, Holly Valley Playground replacement, Campus El Segundo shade structures, the Richmond Field renovation, Washington Park Playground replacement, and the addition of a toddler playground, meaning that there's a lot of new, newer equipment coming out in playgrounds geared, most, uh, traditional structures are labeled as catered to ages two to five or five to twelve. A lot of newer equipment is coming out for that, um, zero-to-two age group. And so, using the funding allocation that we have available for fiscal year seventeen-eighteen, uh, the ultimate recommendation for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year is number one, to complete Holly Valley Playground replacement. Uh, Holly Valley Playground is, uh, is very old, uh, outdated. It still has sand surfacing, which, uh, we're trying to move away from for a variety of reasons. Um, it's a very, fa- rather small, um, park playground, so we felt that, um, this is an opportunity to, um, to replace a playground, upgrade a playground with the funding that we have available. Um, one thing that's important to note is that, uh, in the community survey and, and over time, we hear a lot about sha- how important shade is. And rather than, we, i- we had a conversation about what's most efficient in terms, in, in cost-effective. Bringing in after the fact in, uh, a new shade structure over a playground is quite costly. And so, if you recall, uh, our last playground that we renovated was Hilltop, and we can actually build shade into the play structure, so it's more of an, an umbrella coming out of a post that's used in the playground structure. So, um, I think a more cost-effective way to, uh, accomplish that is to integrate shade as we systematically replace these playground structures. Um, the second project that they're recommending for this year is the Campus El Segundo Shade Structures. Again, going back to, on the left-hand side, number seven. Um, and AYSO has actually indicated that they have, uh, about seventy-five thousand dollars to donate to this project. And so, again, using that, what's most cost-effective with the budget that we have available, felt that, uh, this is a project that we could accomplish. Uh, the new turf is in, so this would just be an added amenity and, and benefit over at Campus El Segundo. And it wouldn't only benefit AYSO, it would benefit spectators, coaches, athletes, uh, everybody really who utilizes that facility. So the, the city funds going towards that would, is estimated to be about fifty thousand dollars. And then the third project is basically whatever's left over from the two hundred and fifty after those two are completed, um, would be used towards, uh, the teen center. One of our big goals this year is to, uh, really focus on the teen center and making that a place where, um, kids of all ages, all different interests, uh, feel comfortable going, and their parents feel comfortable taking them there and letting them be there. So, um, once we, we get approval to move forward, we would really probably initiate a more concerted effort in, um, community feedback, particularly from the teens, on what types of improvements they would wanna see. So that takes us to the end of the presentation, and we can cer- I can certainly answer any questions that you have.
Meredith?
Yes.
Comments?
I just wanna thank you for doing this, Meredith. I know I did talk to, to the, um, Rexon Parks Commissioners, and both of them felt that this was a very good exercise, and they, it, they felt really engaged and that they feel that, um, this really ha- it would enable them to really reach out to the community, find out what the community really wanted, and that it was a very, a great learning experience for them, and they're really excited that they can continue this, and they felt really valued and, which is really great. So thank you for conducting this and, and doing this. It's very good.
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was great. Thank you for including them. The, if you had to guess on the teen center without knowing what the requirements are, the teens, are we talking about a couple hundred thousand, half a million, what's?
I think it really depends. I mean, it really is a, to me, an open canvas inside. I mean, it needs, you know, some cosmetic fixes in terms of flooring and painting, exterior painting, definitely, um, probably some landscaping just to spruce it up a bit. But, um, all of the furniture, TVs, gaming equipment, it's really all donated equipment, pool tables, ping-pong tables. And so, trying to probably make it more inviting and comfortable and durable, to be honest, it's all hand-me-down, so it doesn't come in the best condition either. So, you know, we also have ideas of trying to incorporate a computer lab or some other sort of creative workspaces that would really open up the types of programming that we could have there. So I, I think it runs the gamut, probably a couple hundred dol- a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, the only thing I struggle with a little bit is I live near there, and there, I've never seen kids there. Um, and it's probably because the park is completely old and probably not even safe at this point. I shouldn't say that out loud. But anyway, I guess that's what I struggle with a little bit, is allocating funds towards that before a teen center that is really heavily used, I think, or used to be when my kids were teens. But I like the recommendations. Another question for AYSO, the shade structure will be home and visitor's side, or?
Still to be developed. We've had some initial concepts. It could be, um, really depends on how far the budget goes. But i- i- it's also one of those projects that we could phase in, you know, depending on the budget as well. Um, initially, we're thinking some sort of a cantilever-type shade structure, um, probably ideally on both sides, over the concrete spectator area and also over the sidelines.
Yeah, 'cause the, the visitor's side and the other touchline is definitely a disadvantage. You can't escape the sun at all over there.
Right.
Unless you bring your own umbrella. Okay, thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
You do bring up a good point, Drew, about the teen center, because we do have other parks and some newer parks, yet we don't really have anything for our teens that's engage, you know, that's inviting. And I know, Meredith, you wanted to expand some of the programming as far as tutoring and a place for kids to study rather than just a library, and it's a place that they can call home, um, especially given with everything going on with social media and the whole, um, you know, bullying that's going on within just, it's just in our society, that the teen center does, is kind of, we do need to focus on the teen center.
I agree. We sort of drop off in our services for kids when they get to be that age, and that's when they need a lot of
Yeah.
attention and places to go.
There's a park that I just discovered not too long ago, Candy Cane Lane Park, over there.
Where have you been?
Well, I mean, no-
That's my favorite.
On Whiting, right? One Hundred Block of Whiting. Does that get any use? That's, 'cause that's a similar footprint, I think, to what we're talking about on alley.
Right, it, it does. I think, you know, the majority of those smaller parks are, are used by residents within walking distance. I don't think those are destination parks where people actually drive to visit. And again, I think, you know, having shade or having restroom facilities plays a big part, or picnic tables, different things like that, plays a big, um, it's a decision-making factor on, on, on where to visit. Um, we hear a lot, too, recently about, um, parents of, of particularly younger kids wanting fences around, uh, the different play areas, um, to act as a barrier, much like our totlot at Rec Park. So a lot of people drive to come to Rec Park because it has those certain amenities.
I'd just like to compliment you, your staff, and then the Parks and Recs Commission for going through the effort to prioritize this and make the recommendation, and I wanna support them completely. I think they did a great job, so, very well done.
I do, too. I would like to think about the teens, though. We have a lot of great kids in town. I mean, those are our volunteers at the Mayor's Good Friday Breakfast. Every year, they're there, and they're just really respectful and helpful, and I would like to offer them more services.
Well, we do have that two hundred thousand dollars that we had identified for the lighting at the golf course. It's still open. Um, we, as a council, can decide if we wanna put it toward the teen center if that's, I mean-
That's a good idea, Carol.
Well, can you go back to that slide where you listed that you prioritized from Rexon Park? Acacia's happening anyway, and we've already set aside funds for that, if I remember correctly, right?
Set aside funds for the design portion of it, and once we have the design, we'll, we'll, we'll be back requesting funding to actually complete the project.
The plunge isn't gonna happen until we have a million and a half or two million dollars, and, but I, I think we have a gap with the teen center. I agree, to, to Carol and Suzanne's point. I would like to see that pushed up in priorities. That's particularly vulnerable age anyway, and there aren't that many resources, things for them.
Sure.
Do we wanna-
I think one of the reasons why it's number three right now is because the scope really hasn't been developed. So, i- you know, having the ability to actually complete a project was, was part of the, the consideration. So we've, they felt that, you know, having ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars at the end of the year, we could either probably roll it over and be back in front of council asking to supplement, uh, what, what's needed. Um, but really using the time to reach out to the community and the teens and, and better develop how much funding we actually need.
Do you think we'll have a chance to do that before strategic planning, when we start making those allocation decisions?
I think if we get the, the go-ahead on, on what's, what's here, knowing that we'll have some project budget this fiscal year, then that would be our, our goal to, to start, you know, as soon as possible.
Right, thank you.
I move that we approve the Recreation and Parks Department Capital Improvement Project list.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Five-zero. Thank you. Thank you, Meredith. Thank you-
Thank you very much.
Rec and Parks Commissioners and everyone involved. Item number nine, consideration and possible action to receive and file a review of the proposed designs for the library Wi-Fi and reading lounge renovation taking place in the northeast corner of the main floor. Fiscal impact, one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Mayor, Members of Council, this is another project that council and staff discussed during strategic planning. Uh, money was set aside, budgeted for this project. The library staff, along with the professional design team, has developed some options. Those options were shared with the library board. They're also shared with the patrons of the library, and, uh, Mark Herbert is here tonight to, um, really just provide an update to council on, uh, the status of the project, uh, the recommendations of the, the library board and the, the proposed project schedule. And, and Mark, maybe you can talk about, not just what this project looks like, but, but what it means to the library as far as transformation and changing of the, the use of the facility.
Look, Mary, uh, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Changes in technology have affected the way library staff and customers use the library's physical resources, more specifically the reference books, and how the facility itself is used. Uh, during recent years, both staff and customers have come to rely on the library's databases, information, rely less on the reference books, as many of them are out of date, they're no longer published, and they contain information readily found in the databases. With today's prevalence of online resources and, uh, personal mobile devices, libraries have shifted to becoming community areas where people gather together to study, conduct research while charging their devices, uh, or to enjoy the library's ambiance while reading. During busy times of the day, many of the El Segundo libraries, sixty-five upstairs seats are filled, and cords crisscross the floors to, uh, connect with electrical outlets, creating potential hazards. At times, groups meeting to work on projects are forced to gather around a few available chairs, and the outlets are at a premium. In order to enhance the library's goal of providing quality customer service, a project was developed to repurpose this underutilized reference space. The project involves removal of the shelving, relocation or removal of the reference books, a mo- a majority of which are forty years or more old, um, and the removal of older microfilm tables and a cabinet. The project, with the project approved by CPAC and later by the council during last year's strategic planning, the library began the process of renovating the reference book area to create the Wi-Fi lounge and reading area, incorporating new seating for up to fifty-two persons and a variety of individual and group tables that include attached charging stations. Uh, this area is east of the main reference floor and covers approximately fifteen hundred square feet. The architectural firm, CWA, was engaged to create design options for the renovation, as you see here. While there are two distinct designs, classical and coastal, we were informed that the options could be combined. Uh, and as Sarah mentioned earlier, at the March thirteenth Library Board of Trustees meeting, the board members approved a combination of classic furniture with coastal color scheme. Considering style, durability, and how the color schemes would match with existing colors, library staff also recommend classic furniture, coastal colors. Public comments were solicited, uh, both in the library and online. We had a response of two hundred and fif- two hundred fifty-one responses. Um, and while the numbers varied for the combinations, ninety-one preferred classic furniture in color, while a hundred and twenty-two preferred coastal furniture in colors. As Greg asked, um, in regards to how the library will look, this is definitely going to modernize us. It is going to be the meeting place for people. That's what we hope. So, at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Carolyn Charles and Seal, uh, I'm sorry, Steve and Finney of CWA to present the design options to you.
Mark? Well, um, Steve and I are here to present the design for the Wi-Fi lounge, and that introduction, Mark covered almost every point that I was gonna do. So I'll, I'll save you some time and just let you know that those two boards represent the two design styles that were just mentioned, coastal and classic. And really, it's, those styles are about a feeling, more than about the functions of these furnishings. The functionality and the budget for both are identical. So really, what we're talking about is a feeling. You can see on the slide that the area that we're working with, and along the east wall are these beautiful giant windows, and currently, the space is occupied by stacks of very old books. So removing those books and opening up the space instantly gonna modernize the feel of that whole floor, without adding a penny to the budget, just by removing the stacks. In addition, we want to provide multiple functionality with the furnishings, going to provide new carpet, um, and new electrical system, which is tucked neatly under the carpet, so that all the wire management would be integrated with the furniture. Here, we're showing a floor plan of the coastal layout. And again, the layouts are very similar, but the coastal layout we are proposing, um, since it's more of a, a modern feel, more clean, minimal, it's more shared study tables, um, than, than the, the classic version. Otherwise, they're very similar. So at this area, we have a very living-room-like feel, lounge feel. You see that we have lounges with wired side tables so that patrons could relax and plug in and read, or do whatever they feel like doing. We have collaborative space here. Down the center of both schemes, we have high counters and high stools, so that it has more of that modern Apple Store-type feeling. And then we have the classic, um, study desks that are shared along this side. Along those windows that will now be open and bright and flooded with daylight, we have, uh, comfortable lounge chairs with tablet arms, as well as charging stations in the side tables. Next slide, please? Okay, so classic, the only, the main difference you're gonna see here is we have the same living-room style in this area, but we have more lounge feel. The classic, if you wanna look at the materials board to see, um, the palette that we're working with, it's more woodsy, it's more velvety, it's more traditional in terms of a library feel. And you can see here with the, with the coastal, uh, materials board, we're taking some cues for the colors and, and finishes from the coast, sky, the sand, and then pops of color in the furnishings. Both of the schemes would have, some of the furnishings would have pops of color in the upholstered seats, for example, just to give both schemes a really modern, fun feel. some of the furnishings would have pops of color in the upholstered seats, for example, just to give both schemes a really modern, fun feel. All of the furnishings are being selected with, with durability and maintenance in mind so that the pieces, we intend for this project to last for 20 years. Thank you.
Her question, the orientation of the, uh, lounges along the east wall that's opened up now, are they facing out towards Main Street or are they facing into the library?
Chairs?
Mm-hmm. The, the lounges that you showed?
So, the, the chairs along those east windows are facing in towards, towards the library, but these shared, these are high tables and high stools which will be looking right out over that beautiful view of the lawn in the front.
I like your idea, Dr. Brand.
Why, why? Why not face the chairs out to the east that are along the east wall?
That would be another way to think about it.
Just need a little interior decorating here and it's all good.
Another way to think about it.
Thank you.
Uh, Steve Finney.
You can always do that.
One thought, excuse me, one thought along that line is to be able to provide, uh, power immediately adjacent to the chair and be able to supply it from the wall. As opposed to, you have some structural issues with regards to the building in terms of being able to bring power in without having to core and x-ray the slab and try to understand because it's an elevated slab. So, what we're really looking at doing too is trying to find a very cost-effective way to work within the budget to provide as much power as possible, fire this up. Now, having said that, we can take a look at how we would go about range elements along the glass to get a little better view, but I think it's more of a side. One of the things we have done to address the summit was to try to get people up at bar height so they could look over so we have a tiered seating system. So, they can sit up higher and look out.
Pretty out there. Those chairs, they don't swivel, I take it?
No, we've reduced any moving, haven't any furnishings with hinged operations or...
So, that means we have to make the call, face east or face west?
Well, essentially, we're providing a Wi-Fi lounge and the majority of patrons will most likely be looking down, not out. But, but the space itself will be beautifully illuminated all day because it's east light, so it'll be filtered light all day long. It's really going to make an incredible change for the library.
I have, I have one question about the lighting. Um, now, when we open that up, are, are, do the windows, are they low E windows? I mean, this will bring in a lot of more sunlight. You know, there's fading, there's, um, you know, just exposure to sunlight. Are those windows, you know, been modified so that they're low E?
I will, I believe those are the existing windows and I don't know that that was one of the items in our budget, place them. But I did hear from the library staff that they have some pretty raggedy shades that they want to get rid of, want to be able to see out through those windows. As far as the fading of the furnishings, um, again, we are, we are specifying hardcore furnishings that can, that won't fade and that won't fall apart. So, you see the carpeting plan there and we're keeping the existing context in mind. You can see on the materials boards that the existing carpet, there's a little swatch of it on each of these. And we've selected carpets that can, um, that can work with the adjacent carpets that we have. But all of this will be new with all of the electrical wiring. And you can see this is, these, these floor outlets will be coordinated with our wired furnishings. The furnishings are designed with a wire path that goes directly into the floor outlet, so no more tripping over, um, electrical wires. In terms of the seating, we have a variety of different kinds of furnishings. These are some examples. We're still making our final selections because we're, we need to make a decision as far as the direction aesthetically, either the coastal or the classic or a combination. But there will be lounge seats with adjacent tables where patrons could charge their devices. This slide is stretched, but these are high stools on that high counter that we talked about. And then desk chairs to be used, uh, in the shared study. And a variety of table heights, side tables. Some of them will be wired and some will not, depending on our budget. And we have the high counter and then we have the traditional study tables, see here.
So, before we make our final decisions on specific furniture, um, maybe the, the library board could go to the new 360, the new, um, the workspace, the shared workspace. They have a lot of conference areas and, you know, they're expanding and just see what people are using. So, you can see what type of furniture people are actually using because they have many different types of furniture layouts and which, what, what are people gravitating toward?
And what is the new 360?
That's not 360, it's the, um, the cross, cross purpose or cross campus.
Shared work, shared workspace.
Shared workspace.
Spicy.
So, there's a brand new one on, um, in El Segundo. And I know that they have a lot of different types of, uh, furniture.
We're not looking to make this a shared workspace. We want...
No, 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 no. I understand, but people, I'm just using...
We want people too comfortable, running businesses out of the library.
But they have many different types of lounge areas laid out and you could ask them, just do a little surveillance to see what, what type of, where, where people are gravitating toward.
Okay, I, I think we've mostly covered, um, our design to this point. Um, we've been given a budget of $94,000 and what you're seeing here are furnishings and fixtures and finishes that we feel we can confidently provide within that range. If, if there's any questions or commentary, we would love to do about it.
This is in the 17, 18 budget, it looks like.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like what you've done. I, you know, the coastal or the other one, your, oh, I, I think it, they're both great, so thank you. I think it was very well done.
Thank you. The functionality will be the same either way. It's really just a, a question of style.
I didn't know we had a library. I'm just kidding.
Exciting facelift for our library. It's one of the jewels of our city.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Thank you to the library trustees and, and I agree with the recommendation Sarah made earlier about classic furniture with coastal colors, so...
Good.
Excellent.
When would the work be completed so I can begin to enjoy it?
Well, I think we have a representative from Public Works here. Do we, Mark? Talk about the schedule? And?
Ah, yeah.
Uh, here he comes.
You woke him up.
I would, I would be happy to pass that on to Kent. He's like, what project?
I don't have an answer for that, honestly. Um, it's got to get into the CPAC budget, Hethers Design. That's where we are right now. So, we'll see where we are at the strategic planning and coming up in the current fiscal year and see, um, where this scope goes and its actual construction costs. I don't know if we've had that fleshed out yet. All right. We need that first.
But the, the money we, is allocated for this fiscal year, so...
Okay. This is a receive and file?
Thank you.
No comment?
Mayor, this, yeah, it is a receive and file and, and, no, I think we, we wanted to show you, just give you an update, but we also wanted to highlight the, the transformation of the library's role and modernization and...
Very nicely done.
And I should also note that our former library director, Deborah Brighton, retired, uh, four months ago, but she stayed on this project and has volunteered her time for the last four months to, to make sure that this got, is, is getting completed.
I see her here. Hello, Deborah. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, Deborah.
I know you volunteer with other things at the library as well.
Did we ever approve her to leave?
Thank you.
Change the locks when she left.
Thank you very much for your time. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Item number 10, consideration and possible action to present the current staffing environment as well as the state of recruitment at the El Segundo Police Department. Additionally, consideration and possible action regarding incentives to attract lateral and entry level of police officers to apply at the City of El Segundo Police Department. Fiscal impact to be determined and I see our police chief, Bill Wayland. Welcome, Chief Wayland.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you on what is a very, very important topic and that is recruiting quality officers to serve this community and as well as what our current staffing levels are. So, I'll start with a snapshot of today. As of today, we're at 55 out of our 62 sworn staff. Found out last week that after 29 years of honorable service, Captain Avanski has announced his retirement. So, in about two weeks from now, we'll be down to 54. That includes one academy recruit, three officers in the field training program. So, we have right now six recruit applicants who are in the background process. They've, they've made it through all the testing. They're in backgrounds. We started another testing process last week. 24 passed the physical agility and we're waiting for the results of the written test to see who, who of those will go on to the oral board interview. So, a little bit before I, I get into the presentation and it's a, it's a question that comes up quite a bit is why, why are we having this problem right now attracting people? Is it an El Segundo problem? Is it regional? And, and it's really something that if, if you've read fact in the paper, every weekend for the last month or so, there's been some discussion about law enforcement staffing. Recently was the LA Sheriff's Department down about 1,000 positions. But, uh, everybody's hurting right now and there's, it's all anecdotal as to why. I haven't seen any studies that are, uh, scholastic in nature that would definitive on that. But I think we can look around and see the climate we're in right now. Been not only a lot of actual felonious attacks on police officers, but acts by, right now by legislature. If you look up to Sacramento, there's some pending bills that will make it a lot more difficult to do this job and I have grave concern about. There's been negative sentiment in the press and it's also, uh, I think a product of the economic times. In a good economy, less people want to go into public service. And I can tell you, having sat on hiring panels during, uh, the recession, that a lot of people in their, their 30s who were prior in private industry who all of a sudden realized that they wanted to become police officers at the age of 35 after being laid off. So, we do in a downturn, a down economic time, we will see more people. So, we've, we somewhat have a perfect storm going on right now, coupled with the fact that during the Great Recession, every municipality scaled back on their hiring. So, there's a, there is everybody, every police agency in the state of California is hiring right now. It's truly a buyer's market. So, looking at how we fared over a one-year period, we had on average, and, uh, I want to correct something that's in your staff report. I said on average 146 per month. That's actually 146 per test. Tests twice a quarter. Yeah, what we do is we, we go a couple of months and then we take a break for a month and it allows us time to process and do oral boards and so forth. So, of, of the 146 on average applicants, 20, 28 showed up on average for the written test. Now, that's either they didn't meet minimum qualifications, they didn't pass the physical agility course, or they simply didn't show up. Seeing now where a lot of people are shotgunning applications out there and we'll receive them and then we'll never see a body that comes behind it. On average, 17 passed the written. Who went on to an oral board. On average, five passed the oral board and went into backgrounds. So, of 1,167 applications, we sent six to the academy. Three are still with us today. Now, I pulled one of those recruits who did not make it with us for about a month and a half in the training program and the direct cost to the city for him was $75,000. That's with zero return on investment. That doesn't include indirect costs of the field training officer that, that that person was assigned to or, or other people associated with the process or the staff and hiring and all those sorts of things are excluded from that number. But, so it's a significant cost to the city to put people through the program who at this juncture have, are, it's a low success rate. So, why, why should we be concerned about this? I mean, I think it's somewhat obvious, but let me paint a picture of what we're looking at moving forward. We have a veteran workforce. Within two years, 16 of the 54 we currently have will be eligible for retirement. By eligible, I mean they'll be aged 50. That doesn't mean they're going to go. That just means they could go, they want it to. Within six years, 27 of this 54 will be eligible for retirement. Now, this is just eligible for retirement. It excludes people who leave because they were medically retired or they chose to leave. And on average, that runs between one and three officers a year we know will leave for other reasons. So, as you can see with our, with our current rate of about three per year, um, we, we can't, can't tread water rate we're going. So, who do we target? The first type of officer that we target is the entry level police officer. This is somebody who doesn't have prior police experience, whatever reason has chosen to make this their career. Typically, you find that those are younger people, but on occasion, we do get people who have, uh, decided to do a, a career change and, and want to become police officers. Uh, a little bit about an entry level officer is it's about 18 months to two years before they hit the streets. That takes time for testing, time for the academy, time for the field training program. And, and the research I was doing in preparing for this and talking to my colleagues, it's generally accepted that from apprentice to journeyman status, if you will, in comparison to private industry is about a five years. So, you're looking at a five-year police officer as one who, it's not to say that we don't have two-year police officers who are doing phenomenal work, but in the breadth of experience to be a overall quality police officer, one that, that has seen a lot of things and had opportunity to experience things, it's about five years. So, that, just targeting entry level, not going to solve the immediate problem that we have. Now, I think entry level officers are important, long-term health of the organization, because these are people generally who have 25 to 30 years left service to give. So, we certainly want to look at finding those people who will stay with and serve this community in the long term. The next type of person or applicant that we target is what we call pre-service police officers or pre-service applicants. Now, pre-service is somebody who has been to an academy but has not made it off probation at a police agency. This could be because they were in the training program and didn't make it at another agency or it could be because they sponsored themselves through a police academy and now are looking for work. There's one police academy in the area, the Honda Police Academy that is known for and is predominantly people who put themselves through. You look at LA Sheriff's, which is the academy we use, predominantly those are sponsored recruits. Those are people who have been hired by an agency and the agency is now paying their way through there. Um, pre-service, it gives us the benefit of knowing they made it through an academy, so that they've been vetted at least that far. But they generally haven't been tried or tested training environment. Now, like I said, some have. Some have gone to a training program somewhere else and not made it. And that's okay. We will look at them because every, every city has its own culture. Every city is looking for different nuances of what makes a successful police officer. And we have had luck with people who have gotten a fresh start here, are phenomenal police officers, but for whatever reason, didn't make it where they first started out. The last type of police applicant that we would target is a lateral police officer. And to differentiate from the pre-service, this is somebody who has made it through a probationary period at a police department. Speaking from experience, usually when people get into the five to 10-year range is when they start looking where do they want to finish their career. Myself included. When I started, I, I probably didn't do as much research as I should have and I was happy to have a job as a cop. A lot of people find themselves in that boat, but once you start doing police work and you understand what it's about and, and then maybe you have families and other things come along, you really start to look at where is it now that I want to spend the rest of my... And that's, usually you see that in a five to 10 range. After 10 years, people often get set in their ways or they start promoting and then it doesn't make fiscal sense for them to move somewhere else. The last successful lateral applicant we had was in 2011. And that was when the city initiated a change in the retirement system from three at 50 to three at 55, just prior to PEPRA. Now, we're seeing where many other cities have followed suit. Uh, the cities that are still at three at 50, at least the ones that I've called, are still getting lateral applicants in. But the good news is that PEPRA is now five years old. So, these are the ones that are going to be entering that window of time when they're going to be looking around and a transfer of a PEPRA lateral, it, it's no change. They come over at what they're making and so there's no, there's no loss of retirement. So, in this, we looked at our process. As I mentioned to you before with the, the different steps along the way, where one of them's a physical agility test. Looked at the, the state requirement for a physical agility test and surprisingly found they don't have one. They actually simply require that a recruit pass the police academy's standard to get hired. We saw that there were certain components of the test that we were using that eliminated people that might otherwise have been qualified. So, we revamped our PT test and in fact, this last time was the first time that we tried it. We certainly don't want to say we don't want people who are in shape to do the test, but certain things like climbing a wall tend to, to eliminate certain applicants. And so, have to climb a wall, six-foot wall to graduate the academy, but we think if we can get you in, then we can provide that mentorship to you to get you to be able to pass some of the unique stuff that the academy have. We looked at a written test. The state requires a written test. They don't require what written test you use. Now, we currently use what's called the PELlet B. Uh, it is the one that posts California Peace Officer Standards and Training provides. Um, it's an easy one to use because they provide it, but the problem is they grade it. So, we have to send our written test to be graded, which is a one to two-week turnaround. What we're going to do is we are going to develop our own written tests that will be acceptable to the state, but that we can grade instantaneously. So, this whole goal is to expedite the process because we're seeing now as people, like I said, are shotgunning applications. We had one a couple processes ago. We had one a couple processes ago where they looked like a great applicant, but they, somebody else beat us to the punch. So, they dropped out with us when they were in the background process, and then they went with the other agency. The quicker we can get our hands on somebody, the better off we'll be. Also part of this, because with over a thousand applicants a year and all the testing that goes on, you can imagine the incredible workload that's taking place and the demand that it's placing on the organization, the city and the police department. So, we've spoken about transferring. We have a vacant analyst, or I'm sorry, administrative assistant position in the police department, transferring that to human resources to create a human resource analyst position that could, while working under the umbrella of human resources and in the chain of command of human resources, would be dedicated to the police department. Not only to help move the applications along, but to help with the testing, and not only of applicants, but we also, completely separate issue, have a whole testing process going on for internal promotions right now. And lastly, we're looking at contracting with a marketing firm, Phelps. And I've met with them. They're in the process of putting a proposal together for us. And depending on the cost of that, I'll likely be back and asking approval to move forward with that. We're all fishing in the same little pond here, and we've got to figure out a different way to get our message out there. What we're doing clearly isn't working. So, we're hopeful that somebody, a new and innovative marketing firm, maybe looking at it from a business standpoint instead of a traditional policing standpoint, will provide the tools necessary to not only get the applications in, but it's the quality of the applications. So, in looking at what can we, or what are we recommending for improving on entry level, I want to talk about first our cadet program. To me, this is the farm league. This is where you bring young men and women in, eighteen years old. Farming is you're eighteen, you're in college, and you have a C average. And these are the ones that I believe are the future that we can expose to police work and get them to a level where they can be successful. I equate this to, my son's in ROTC in college. I'm an Air Force officer. The first two years you're in ROTC, it's really about both sides getting to know each other and determining whether or not we like you and whether you like us and how's that all going to work? But then after two years, there's a series of testing that takes place. And if you move on to the third year now, now it's a little more serious. And you start moving through various leaderships positions with the end goal of having a successful officer in the Air Force. And I think we could do something just as similar when we're looking at four years roughly for the cadets because they're in college. First couple of years, which we understand, not everybody who wants to be a cadet is going to be someone who wants to go on and be a police officer. And the last thing you want is for somebody to enter this field who truly doesn't want to do it. But then, once we know that they're serious about us and we really like them, we're moving them into more advanced things where they're really getting exposure to those items where we're seeing deficiencies in those recruits coming out of the academy. Port writing, geographic knowledge of the city are just a couple that they get distracted on those issues, and then they can't focus on the multitasking and the other things they have to do. We can eliminate that and get that out of the way on the front end, then these recruits, I think, will have a much better chance at success. So, we're asking to increase our current allotment of six to fifteen. We have six. We just hired our sixth. We have, in the process to get that sixth, we have six more who were in the background who are all looking to be high-quality individuals that I think would be tremendous assets to this department. Now, there is obviously a cost increase to doing that. I mentioned it in the report, it's about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. But I'd like to point out that last year, we had almost two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in parking, largely generated by three cadets. So, not that we would ever want to hire people for the purposes of writing tickets and parking citations, but we know that there's a parking problem in this town, that we need more people looking at it. And so, by having more cadets, that's one side benefit is they could be out writing more parking tickets and enforcing the laws that aren't being enforced right now, staffing shortages. But also, cadets can do things that we're currently using police officers for, like the run we have coming up this weekend, a traffic control post. We can use a lower-cost cadet for that, police officer on overtime. Take a look at Candy Cane Lane. Had a lot of police officers out working that this past Christmas, where if we would have had more cadets that had availability, they would be a much lesser cost to the city. So, I think a cadet program provides an immediate return on investment. But I also think if done properly, it will provide a long-term return on investment because we'll get people who are loyal to this city, who will want to stay here and have a high degree or chance of success. With that, staff is also asking for consideration of council of adding a educational benefit to a cadet who has been here two years and now is moving into their third year. Mount requested is the same as what a full-time city employee currently receives, which is one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Much like I would like to say with police officers, I want this to be a destination location. I want us to be turning people away, to have one opening for fifty applicants where only the best is who we're hiring. Not that we're having to beg people, in essence, to come and work here. That's not where we should be at, and I think that serves better. And I think by doing this, the word will get out there for people who want to become police officers and police cadets. Also with entry level, we're looking at out-of-state applicants. I'd like to report that we've had some success. So, we went to Oregon a couple of weeks ago, and Sergeant Villarreal went up there and administered a physical agility, took the initial application, took a written. Now, when I met with each one of you privately, I didn't have the results of the written, but we found out that three passed the written, and they are all flying down here, I believe, next week to take oral board interviews. And we have our polygrapher set up, and we've got everything set up for them so that by the end of their couple of days here, if they pass, they'll be able to move into the background process. One of the things that we've asked for in the staff report, and again, we're just trying to come up with creative ideas and thinking out of the box, but is to consider providing relocation expenses if we do hire an out-of-state applicant or say, an applicant who resides more than a set number of miles from the city for reimbursement of moving costs to come down here. The last thing I'd like to talk about are what we could do to attract lateral police officers. I really believe this police department, I believe in this community, and I believe there are many people who would do very well here and who would love to work here because of how great this place is. Have to get their attention. Every city in this state is hiring right now. And in many ways, we blend in with all the background noise as far as who we are. I think when we can get them here and we can talk to them, I can have a cup of coffee with them. I can really explain the benefits of working here, but what can we do to get them to look at us? And I think the answer to that, and I would like consideration from council, is a hiring bonus. Currently offer a three thousand dollar hiring bonus for lateral police officers. To give you some idea of what is going on, the highest that we could find in the state is a twenty-five thousand dollar hiring bonus that the city of Palo Alto provides. Within Southern California, the highest we could find is Beverly Hills at ten percent annual salary. And within our local area, the city of Torrance provides a bonus of sixty-five hundred dollars. We would ask that council consider what it costs us to pay for a entry level that doesn't make it, and if there's some way we could channel some of that money into a lateral hiring bonus. And I would propose that it would be revisited on an annual basis as we compare the success of it with how much salary savings we have. And I know you'll be receiving a report tonight that we have significant salary savings right now in the police department due to our shortages. And that at any point in time that we felt we didn't need it anymore, we could certainly end it. But I think a significant hiring bonus would certainly get the attention, coupled with appropriate marketing to reach the audience out there, and it would certainly generate a buzz amongst lateral applicants. We could also, council could consider if want to provide a hiring bonus to pre-service. My recommendation would be a lesser amount. Pre-service doesn't bring bang for the buck that a lateral police officer brings, other than they've made it through an academy. We don't have the expense of sending them to one. That's six months of salary that we save on sending them to an academy. That concludes my presentation. With that, I'm available for any questions you have.
Thank you, Chief. Comments, questions?
No, I'm just very, thank you very much. Very comprehensive report. And I'm just happy that you have reached out to the Phelps, because I know when we originally talked, there was a lot of in-house marketing going on. And when you train as a police officer, you don't necessarily train to become a marketer. So, I think by partnering with Phelps, it brings continuity in our messaging. So, I'm really pleased that you guys are looking at that.
On the bonus for lateral police officers, ours is three thousand. It's too low. How does that impact the PERS? Is it counted towards PERS?
It's non-PERS-able.
Right. We need a number that can motivate people to choose us over everyone else that's out there looking. It looks like the highest you found in the South Bay was sixty-five hundred at Torrance. So, we can do better, and it's cost-effective because you're losing so much now on what ends up being false starts. For the lateral, you've got a proven officer there. And I really think we need to upgrade our bonus. Is that generally paid at the time of entry? Or is it spread out over a series of years?
Well, it would be by way of resolution, and we could do it however council felt comfortable. When I looked at the resolution for the three thousand, I believe, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now. I know there was a provision, and if they left within three years, it had to be repaid. I would have to defer to council if that's still a legal contract to make with somebody. I know there was some discussion of that a few years back, but we could certainly say a portion now and a portion upon completion of probation, which is one year.
Yeah, I agree with that, with increasing the bonus. What number were you looking for?
Well, I mean...
Number that works.
I would like it to be an aggressive bonus, personally. I would like it to be something where shake their heads and go, wow, did you hear what else? I want the buzz in locker rooms at the sheriff's department and everywhere up and down the state to be, did you just hear what El Segundo did?
So, you're looking like for ten, fifteen?
Five digits.
Before you throw those numbers out there, here's the naysayer in this, right? So, surprising it's me, right? But I don't, you know, from an economic, you know, from an economic analysis, if you're saving on the, you know, the potential cost of the city, I don't have a problem with that. The problem I had was when you go to these other agency meetings, every other city has the same problem. Everybody's trying to hire, and it's hard to get people in, in public safety, in the police officer side of it. And what I worry about is when you start floating these bonuses out there, people are going to look at, you know, is the bonus the reason I'm going there? Is that why I'm getting? It's going to, you're going to start escalating the cost of the service when that's really not the issue. I think the issue is that we haven't had a sustained hiring process. We use, I'll use the water faucet approach, but we turn it on and turn it off when we want to hire. And I don't think that's a sustainable feeder system in any organization. So, I think solving our problems about getting in a sustained hiring process is probably critical to the longevity of the police department. I think reputation, what the police say about their own department has a big input, too. I think El Segundo has to have positive feedback from those that work here. Otherwise, you're defeating the purpose and throwing money out there. From an economic overlook, it may look like you're saving money, but ultimately, I think you're going to start driving the cost of this service up, and there's going to be bidding wars between cities for signing bonuses, and I worry about that. Lateral's concern me a little bit because, you know, typically, if somebody's not happy where they're at and they're going to lateral out somewhere else, there's a reason for that, and I don't know how you sort that out, how you really deal with that. Promotional opportunities are completely different. But a lateral move, just to move, unless it's a, you know, there's geographical reasons that families relocate and do things, there's lots of logical reasons for it. But a lateral move in any kind of an organization concerns me. The reason for the move is critical into that. So, just by throwing money out there and trying to address this issue, I worry about that. But I do want to be cost-effective. So, there's a double-edged sword there. I don't think we ought to be throwing wild numbers out there, like a bidding war to get more people here. That's just my two cents.
No, that's why I just wanted to know what number he had in mind. The only thing is that when it comes to lateral moves in our, in the private sector, that's a culture that's now very prevalent. You know, most people, they stay in a job for five years. So, the rest of society is used to moving and looking for opportunities and growth. So, that's not an unknown culture in the private sector. So, I just think maybe government is starting to catch up.
Lateral movements have been around for a while. I myself exclude, I mean, here as chief, I was a lateral police officer. I went from the city of Garden Grove to the city of Irvine because after being a police officer for almost ten years, I realized that was a place that fit I wanted for the rest of my career. And working at Irvine, we hired a tremendous lot of those. And they were all very, only one of the probably thirty that were hired when I was there, we had to get rid of.
I do think Mike's onto something. It reminds me of when the airlines decided they were going to implement mileage plans. Prisoners' dilemma. Everybody had to implement mileage plan, and so it increased the cost of everybody. Having said that, I do think we're in somewhat of a dire situation, regardless of the reason, past practices, et cetera. I think to Mike's point, we need to fish, be start fishing in different pools, which you started to do, different ponds, and change the way we look for people and how we reach them on social media. So, I would support this if it was on a very short-term basis to see what kind of results we get, because you've also just shifted some of the way in which you're going. You know, you streamline your testing process, you're looking for different types of applicants. And then to Don's point, for any of these bonuses, relocation, tuition reimbursement, or assigning bonus, I think they should be contingent on a time requirement, either paid over time or paid back if that's enforceable. I know for, when I was in the military, they were used all the time. If there was a particular shortage in MOS or a rating, they use these. And it does drive activity pretty quickly, and it fills holes. I would just like to not commit to it for a long period of time, see how it goes, and get some momentum out of it and then pull back, I would ask. But thank you. Very, very, very comprehensive. I appreciate all the effort you put into this, Chief.
Great, great report. And I like the fact that you're looking at a variety of avenues to get our numbers up. Lateral just being one of those. We've really sought this through, and we have the same issues in education. We traditionally have trouble finding math teachers, science teachers, special education teachers, Spanish teachers, et cetera, over the years. This is a great place to work, and we need to demonstrate that and explain that to people. I'm good with twenty-five thousand dollar bonuses for a while. You see, I'm good with overstaffing this and going to sixty-five, knowing that we'll get attrition in the future. I've been sitting here since two thousand eight, as I mentioned a month ago. We just never seem to get to where we expect and want to be. So, we're going to have to start behaving differently. And you've come up with a number of things. I think you said to me the possibility even of looking to the United States Air Force as people are retiring from there, that may be in similar-type work coming over. They're used to the city, they know how great it is. But a whole variety of things here. Let's try to move this thing, because we're heading for fifty-two. We're not heading for sixty-two unless we do something different. And I know you want to, and I've thought this through. Thank you.
Chief, I want to thank you. You and I have had multiple conversations about this, and these are very creative and very thoughtful. I am fine with signing bonuses over time. My question is, if they're too high, what does that do to the morale of our existing officers? Is that going to have a detrimental effect?
I've had several conversations, not with specific numbers, but on the topic. I believe there's support in the rank and file. I think there's grave concern, as I have, with what's going to happen if we get too low. This is a way to get our experienced in the door, or at least see if it works to get them in the door. At least to get them to come talk to us. I don't, I don't believe it will, the conversations that I've had.
And also, when we talked about a time period, I mean, you have to have time to prove this. It can't be three months or six months. It needs to be a year or two to see if it's effective and if we can actually retain the officers that are recruited. And I really support the idea of increasing the number of cadets. Those cadets we have are terrific. And I believe the city manager, council member, PERS-Tech, and I have all contributed to that, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So, they're doing a great job. So, I support this. You did say one thing at the beginning that you have, you're concerned about some bills up in Sacramento, and I know that's another conversation, but we need to know that because through the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, the Independent Cities, the League of California Cities, we need to know this, because that's our advocacy group. So, I don't know if the police chiefs and the sheriffs are chiming in on that, but those are our electives, and they need to know how you feel.
We got ambushed. The assembly bill that's in right now, there was no consultation with any law enforcement. So, this just came out, I believe, last week, and we're still trying to digest what it means and act it's going to be. and act it's gonna be, and so I certainly will bring that to all of you, once I get a better handle.
Thank you. Well, we have a shameful state legislature, and I'm not surprised that they don't all consider themselves law enforcement experts and can make those decisions for you and your colleagues, so. Any other?
I, yeah, just, a year or two, I would like to see what we can do in six months. You know, how much activity we can get in six months, and find a number that's meaningful for people. I don't know what that number is, maybe Phelps or some other agency can help. Maybe it's $9,999, maybe it's the price of a car, or whatever a lateral could be looking for, something that's going to stick, that's actually got potentially some momentum from a media or press standpoint. But for me, it would have to be tied to some kind of commitment, too, you know? You sign a bonus, you're in for four years. When you get tuition reimbursement from a corporation, you're in for two to three to four years, if they're gonna pay for that. I know that the amounts aren't similar, I'm not as concerned about the tuition, but when you talk about $10,000 or $25,000, that's, that's significant. We'd hate to have them come here, leave after a year, and go take that signing bonus that another city is offering, potentially, so that's all I would ask.
So, we have multiple things to provide direction on. Hiring bonuses, creating a pre-service hiring bonus, authorizing tuition reimbursement for police cadets, proving enhanced benefits to attract out-of-state officers, that would be the moving package, so. We have consensus on?
I'm okay with moving expenses to bring somebody here that wants to be here, absolutely. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with some kind of a signing bonus. And I like what Drew said, what's the right number? And I don't, and the bigger that number, the longer the commitment, is kinda how I feel about it. Maybe that's just an old guy talking, but...
Makes sense.
I agree with you.
But I do worry that laterals coming in, sooner or later, compete with the guys that are there for promotional opportunities, and that can be an issue, too, going forward. So I worry about bringing laterals in. It's just, a healthier organization develops its own and gets it, you know, has a creative development process that just generates a good, a good flow of work, and when you upset that, it has some consequences. I've seen it happen, so...
Well, I heard Chief say he wants to build his bench, but in the meantime, he's looking to laterals to...
How much of this can we authorize the chief to move forward on? And what if any of it needs to be negotiated with the Police Officers Association?
In my consultation with our labor attorney, all of that I brought forward to you here, okay, to be outside the MOU. Obviously, I didn't talk about paying benefits for existing officers, because that would be under the auspices of collective bargaining, it would be under...
I think you should go ahead on all fronts, and let's take a look at it in six months and see what good we've done.
The council will need to give some direction and vote on dollar amounts. As far as the bonuses, it's not...
I mean, if Torrance is at $6,500, and I've heard that they're, we lose officers there, right? They're competitive, they're vying for our candidates, potentially, right? Similar size, get paid more, right? Maybe bigger, bigger city, but I mean...
What number had you, did you have in mind?
Well, in all honesty, I had $25,000.
I think our intent was to get just the pulse of the council tonight. We'll return with a temp, admin code or resolution with a sunset date.
Can I just make one point about Palo Alto? Because I just did a little bit of research prior, and knew that, like, they're actually almost staffing their own infrastructure and support services, because the cost of living is so high there, they can't even get people to Palo Alto. So I would hate to use that as our benchmark.
As a barometer, yeah.
You know, but I'm anxious to see the number.
So we'll, we'll develop the, the admin code or resolution that memorializes this with staff's recommendations for council to discuss. I understand that you want to have a sunset date, so we'll build a sunset date or a reevaluation date into that, that section. The one personnel change would not be temporary, which is reallocating a position from the police department to the human resources department, changing that classification from an administrative assistant to a HR analyst. So there's, there's a small budgetary impact there, but that, we'll bring that back for council action as well on the budget reallocation.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
And the marketing piece, I assume, will be within my spending authority. If it's not, we'll bring that back for council approval.
Very good, thank you. It's 9:16, we're gonna take a break for, let's say, six minutes. See you at 9:22. Thank you, for everyone who stayed, Mr. Watkins. Okay, item number 11, consideration of possible action to receive an informational report on the quarterly update for the strategic work plan and the key performance indicators, KPIs, for the second quarter fiscal year 2017-18, fiscal impact none. City manager, I see her.
Joe Lilio will be presenting the last three items on tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Beginning with a brief update of our strategic work program and key performance indicators.
Good evening, Mayor Fuentes, council members. I'll try to be brief on this one. So this is the second quarter update for the strategic work plan and KPIs. So there are a total of 30 priority activities that staff is currently working on, and these are the city council's top priorities that's identified during the strategic planning session. 28 work plan items have a status of green. They have either already been successfully implemented or are underway to be completed by the current fiscal year. It's about 93% of the work plan items. Two work plan items are a status of yellow. They'll be on track to begin by the end of the fiscal year and completed in 1819. And there are no work plan items with the status of red. So some key highlights from the work plan. Information Systems is implementing a solution to enhance the ability to accommodate teleconference capabilities for, within city hall and other city facilities. Recreation and Parks continues to recruit for positions at the new aquatic center, is on track to be operational late summer 2018. City Managed Office continues to expand the CDE newsletter, with growth in new readership of about 1,500 subscribers, a total of 6,300 subscribers. The strategic plan and brief was developed. This is a one-page document that will be loaded onto the website tomorrow morning, and this can be used as a communication vehicle to stakeholders and constituents. I S issued an RFP to update the city website and create a mobile app for a full interface. Bids are due, they were due today, or yesterday. Public Works is currently reviewing bids received for the Main Street Ballards. PD has plans to implement a new automated license plate reader system upon approval from LA City, and this is because they're gonna be placed on the city of LA property. And Public Works issued an RFP for a citywide facility needs assessment. Bids are currently under review. Lakes Task Force released the RFP to address the future of the Lakes Golf Course. Proposals are due by June 14th. And then, city council approved placing Measure C to three-quarter cent sales tax on the April 10th election, which is successfully passed by voters. So the two work plan items with the status of yellow will begin later in 2017-18, to be fully implemented by 1819, and these are implementation of a new computer-aided dispatcher, CAD, and records management system. Then focus on employee development and engagement by developing leadership benchmark strengths, employee evaluations, and succession planning. So staff will continue to monitor and report out the progress of the prior activities. As identified in the adopted strategic plan, with the third quarter review, there will be new items, work plan items added to the, to the work plan. And staff will continue to review and evaluate the KPIs. So this does conclude the presentation, is there any questions?
Thank you, Joe. Questions, comments? Looks like there aren't any. Good job, thank you. And then, pardon? Next item 12, consideration of possible action for the city council to receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report for year ending September 30th, 2017, fiscal impact zero.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Fuentes, Mayor Proton Boils, city council members. The comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR, for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2017, is gonna be presented for your review tonight. Dean Veltava, the senior manager from the city's audit firm, Davis Farr, is here to present, and he'll be available for to answer any questions you may have afterwards.
Good evening, I just have a short presentation on the results of the audit. The main items to discuss will include the auditor's opinion, our recommendation letter, and our required communications with those in governance. Regarding the financial statements, management responsibilities include preparing the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles, and making sure they are... statements in accordance with accounting principles and making sure they are free of material misstatement. The audit responsibilities include following the audit standards, performing tests as even appropriate, and rendering an opinion. This year, we issued an unmodified opinion, was issued on the statements, and that's the best opinion one can receive. As far as the, the numbers are concerned, at the entity-wide level, combined ending equity increased by $2.3 million. The general fund, ending fund balance was $28.6 million, an increase of $5.7 million from the prior year. Regarding the recommendation letter, last year's recommendation letter, we had eight total comments, and six of those were corrected during the fiscal year. And this year, we have no material weaknesses. We have one significant deficiency, as we identified seven material audit adjustments during the course of the audit. We also have four best practice recommendations, a review of open contracts, evaluate advances payable in the golf course fund, and consider putting the terms in writing. We had a comment to enhance controls in the cost payable area, and a comment to research the cause of the deficit equity, the RSI grant fund. As far as our required communications with those in governance, the financial statement estimates were found to be appropriate and reasonable, identify certain adjustments as discussed. There are no disagreements with management, and we're not aware of any consultations with other accountants. I'd also like to thank the finance staff for their cooperation in the course of the audit this past year. Any, any questions?
I have one question. You said there was a significant deficiency?
Yes.
Can you tell us about that?
That was the, the audit adjustments that we found. We found seven audit adjustments during the course of the audit. That's under the kind, the auditing standards, that should be reportable condition, and to control issue for these, for the clients. We had the same comment last year as well on that issue.
Is it corrected now?
So I'll respond to that, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So part of, part of the issue why this was repetitive, I was financed, the team that was still being built up. We did get our two accountants on board, I believe it was July 2017, which is almost at the end of the very, at the end of the fiscal year. We did get the finance manager on board, Dave Davis, late January 2017. So now that we have our full support of the financial services and the accounting team, these issues will be eradicated moving forward. So we have internal controls and checks in place that will prevent this from happening.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, comments?
So, previously, on the back on the one slide, on the, the issue, one more back, on the material weaknesses, you said there were six?
No material weaknesses, but seven audit adjustments that we found.
No, but for, you said last year?
Last year, there were eight comments, and six were corrected.
Okay, and then this year is none, on the material weaknesses?
I'm sorry, total comments?
Okay.
Yes, were, were eight last year. That involve all categories?
So that's, that's a huge improvement, then?
Yes, exactly.
Can you give me an example of an auditor identified adjustment, just so I understand what that really means?
Absolutely. So in front of you, you should have the findings and recommendations letter on page Says audit adjustments detected by the audit process. And one of the items, I guess the third bullet point down, we can use that as an example, an adjustment of $1,452,377 in the donation special revenue fund to properly reflect as an expense. So that was the payment that we made for the pool, the city's portion of that payment, and instead of hitting an expenditure account, it just hit the balance sheet account.
Okay.
So it's still recorded properly. The cash was still deducted, it just, we also need to hit the expense account on that.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I can just add, the council member Pershak's comment about eight findings last year, the year preceding that, there were 17 findings.
Wow.
So we were gradually getting them down, and my ultimate goal is to have zero findings before the council.
Congratulations to your team.
And we have confidence in you.
If you ever get to zero, he's out of a job. You know that, don't you?
Then they'll have to look harder.
That's not how auditing works.
No, but that's a huge improvement. I mean, it just shows that there's a lot of efficiency going on, that there's a lot of streamlining, and that there is oversight, so congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Item 13, consideration of possible action regarding fiscal year 2017-18, mid-year financial review. Fiscal impact, increase of $2,465,113 to the general fund expenditures, and an increase of $2,678,642 to the general fund revenues, and an increase of $346,447 to Fund 405 facility maintenance expenditures.
Mayor, members of council, Joe Lilio will make this report. Generally, the, the news is good. We know it's only mid-year, but so far, we've, we've had a good year. We expect to end the year well on both the expense and revenue side. As you'll see, there are some revenues that are trending down. Our transient occupancy tax and our travel and tourism business apparently is doing very well. It's on track to become our number-one revenue source, up from, from number three. We do have some recommendations at the end of this presentation on what to do with a one-time surplus of dollars, and Joe Lilio will walk us through our, our performance so far and those recommendations.
Good evening again, Mayor Fuentes, Mayor Proton Boils, city council members. Before I begin my presentation, I just would like to point out that there is a correction on page 214 of your agenda packet. Under transient occupancy tax, the TOT, I did reference Measure C in error, so this should reflect a reference to Measure B, which voters passed in 2016, not Measure C. I just wanted to point that out. Okay, this is a quick snapshot of the adopted budget. So revenues were adopted at $69.3 million. Top revenues here are sales tax, sales and use tax at 18%, business license tax at 17, TOT at 16, and property tax at 11. Combined these four revenue sources represent 62% of the general fund. That's a good diversity. General fund expenditures, adopted budget was $72.4 million. We had about $69 million in general operations, and then about $3.2 million in transfers out that were approved. Some things that highlight here is public safety makes up about 54%, followed by Public Works at 11%. So mid-year is just a snapshot of how the city is currently doing as of March 31st, 2018. Revenues are trending higher than the budget in the second quarter, and are anticipating to maintain this trend. So again, the adopted budget was $69.3 million. Because of this trend of higher revenues, which I'll get into some details in subsequent slides, we're revising the year-end estimate for revenues to be $72 million. Expenditures, the adopted budget was $72.4 million. Expenses are tracking below budget. This is mainly due to what's an average of about 30 vacancies at any point in time. Does fluctuate about 25 to 30, but about 30 on average. There is a potential, because of this, for about $2.5 million in salary and benefit All right, this, this slide represents the second quarter revenue received in the prior year. That's the column on far left. Then revenue received in the current year through the second quarter, and then the adopted budget, and the percent of revenues received in the second quarter as a percent of the budget received. Overall, comparing last year's revenues at mid-year, the current year mid-year numbers, revenues are about $1.8 million higher. And some of the key factors there was property taxes about $900,000 higher, and this is due to the Federal Income Tax Reform Act. So most individuals that had to pay income tax, property tax, excuse me, paid both their first and second installment before December 31st. So the second installment is traditionally due to end of March. In order to get that deduction in, they did pay by December 31st. So we saw an influx of that property tax revenue in December and January. There is an increase on interest on investments compared to the prior year, and that's just indicative of the rising in, in interest rate environment. And then there was an increase in the gas UUT. Comparing the current year revenues to budget, the city has received about 58% of its budgeted revenues to date. Staff is anticipating some changes to the adopted budget, which I previously mentioned too. And there are some positive and negative variations in specific revenue counts, which I will review. So sales tax, we're anticipating that to decrease by about $448,000, and that's mainly due to negative audit adjustments that the BOE has found, indicated that will be placing on the City of El Segundo. Transit occupancy tax, $2.5 million increase compared to the adopted budget. This is due to several new hotels coming online, and the year-end revenues for TOT actually came in a lot higher than what we anticipated to at the time we adopted the budget in September. So the TOT, that's, that's ongoing revenue, which the city will probably see it continue to increase. TRA payment, that's the payment, tax resolution agreement from Chevron, that was down about $169,000, but the total payments from Chevron are, are set for this year, they're just a little bit over $12 million. And that does increase each year by a CPI factor. Gas UUT, we're anticipating that to be up by $200,000. And real property transfer tax, up by about $250,000. This has to do with the sale of Pacific Towers, I believe that's the corporate building that was sold. All other general fund revenues, we're anticipating to come in as budgeted, then the transfers in of $346,447. This is due to the closeout of Fund 405, Facility Maintenance Fund. So during the budget process in 1718, we had recommended the city council to closeout that fund and to incorporate the necessary budget within the Public Works government funds building, and that was what the city council adopted. That will allow us better control of those funds on an annual basis, and the leftover funds will automatically be retained within the general fund, rather than sitting in this outside fund. So the cleanup of closing out Fund 405, which again, $0 for budgeted this year, is $346,447 that's sitting there, that will be transferred back into the general fund. So the total of the adjustments, negative and positive, is about an additional $2.7 Please, any questions along the way? Please interrupt me.
On the TOT estimate was low because more rooms came online than expected earlier, and occupancy rates were higher than estimated?
That, that's correct, and room, room rates increased. So for the fiscal year end of 1617, I have the number in a subsequent slide, but I, right here, the TOT came in at almost $12.9 million for fiscal year end September 30th, 2017. So this is a snapshot of where we ended in 1617, total of $71.4 million. The adopted budget for 1718, again, is 69.3, and the revised mid-year, anticipating it to come in at just a little bit over $72 million. Quick review of the expenditures. So through March 31st, the general fund expenditures totaled about 42% of the adopted budget, and most of the savings that you're seeing by departments is really due to vacancies. And I'll go over some of those key factors. So police department expenditures are about $1.4 million lower than the same period last year. With the continued vacancies, we'll probably see this trend continue through the end of the year. And again, this is really due to decrease in salary and savings, salary and benefit savings. Public Works Department expenditures are about $240,000 lower than the prior year. Again, that's due to the same issue, decrease in salary and benefit savings due to several vacancies. The fire department, about $460,000 lower compared to the prior year, and again, that's due to a few vacancies that are in that department. Non-department expenditures, decrease of about $780,000 compared to the prior year. And this decrease is primarily due to decrease in annual leave cash outs that happen in December, and cash outs for unexpected retirements and resignations. So the takeaway I would like you to get from this slide is the additional reserves on the far bottom right-hand corner of about $2.4 million that staff will be discussing recommendations for the use of this money. Before we do that, we'd like to briefly touch on the status of the enterprise funds and the special revenue funds. So for the water utility fund, revenue in the water funds are about $1.3 million lower than last year, and this is mainly due to a timing issue for a large payment from one of our utility users. Revenues are on track to meet the budget at year end. Expenditures are lower than the same period the prior year due to capital projects that recurring during the prior year that are not ongoing this year. Also, expenses are anticipated to be below budget due to several vacancies that are in the water department. Also due to reduction in operating costs in several capital projects that have recently begun that will cross over fiscal year. So we're anticipating that the year-end estimate for expenditures is going to be lower than Sewer fund, revenues in the sewer fund are about $170,000 higher than the same period last year. Revenue source is expected to be about $200,000 higher than the budget for year end. Expenses are higher than the same period last year due to active capital projects in the current year. Expenses are anticipated to be, anticipated to be in line with budget, and there are capital projects underway that are anticipated to be completed by fiscal year end. Golf course, revenues are about 28% received so far to date, and first two quarters in the golf activity, fall and winter are typically slower. Spring and summer, they pick up, so we'll, staff will closely watch the revenue budget there. Expenditures are also lower. We're about 39% of expenditures to date. And again, we'll see an increase in that expenditures during summer and spring, and we're anticipating it to be on track with the adopted budget of about $1.8 million. Special revenue funds, so there's various funds, federal, state, county programs, some grants in there as well. All these funds are projected to meet with budget by year end. Debt service fund. Debt service fund records the city's facility lease activity for Douglas Street gap closure. The revenue for this fund comes from traffic mitigation fees, so the general fund does not support the debt service payment here. The budget for 1718 is about $545,000 for principal and interest payments, and this is expected to be on target. So before we get into staff recommendations, I did want to reiterate the strategic decisions that council has made on addressing the unfunded pension liabilities. This is a snapshot, I think you've seen this before, of, you know, the, the strategic decisions that council has made, additional payments towards unfunded pension liabilities, prepaying the annual unfunded liability, setting up the IRS Section 115 Pension Trust Fund, doing a refinance, a fresh start on three of the city's pension plans, and the creation of a second miscellaneous tier for miscellaneous group, and a second tier for the PD group. So on to staff's recommendations. Staff is recommending funding $1 million. This is for the initial funding of the Section 115 trust administered by PARZ. City council approved establishing this trust back in November of 2017. Approved by council tonight, this will establish initial funds vested into the trust. trust. Staff will monitor the investments on a monthly basis, meet quarterly with the Investment Advisory Committee, the IAC, to evaluate the investment strategy and performance, and meet annually with PARs staff to go over the annual report. Six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. This is towards the additional unfunded pension liabilities for the police first-tier plan. And this is addressing two unfunded liabilities. One is a twenty-five-year amortization base of about four hundred and forty-seven thousand. The second is a twenty-six-year amortization base, two hundred and thirty-six thousand. And these have negative amortization, which is costing the city a lot of money. So by taking this action and paying off those two unfunded line items, the city will be saving about one-point-one million dollars in interest payments over the next twenty-five to twenty-six years. Second item, or the third item, is six hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and three dollars towards the unfunded pension liabilities for the classic fire plan. Again, these are two line items, a twenty-five-year basis and a twenty-six-year basis. So again, we are experiencing negative amortization there. Approved by council, the city will save about one million, eighteen thousand over the next twenty-five to twenty-six years. So if council approves the additional payments towards the unfunded pension liabilities, this will bring the total long-term savings to the city, so of recommendations tonight and going back to what council's already approved, to five million dollars. This will also address funding the unfunded liabilities and reducing it by one-point-nine million dollars. Additional item at council, that staff is recommending to council is eighteen thousand five hundred for the transaction touchpoint surveys. This would be via kiosks within the business center, which would be the planning, a permit center, also the business license and water utility desk. If approved, this will be an additional appropriation to the finance administration budget with the vendor who conducted the net promoter score. And this would be the, this would be a twelve-month contract term. And the final item is one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the designated fire developer fee reserve account. And this is to address additional funding demands for the pre-alert system for fire stations one and two. That developer reserve account currently has a balance of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, so there's sufficient funds in there to address the one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar request. If you have, need additional information on that, Chief Donovan is here tonight to address any questions you have on this.
How much time does that save in response if we have the pre-alert system? What does that shave off of our response time?
Is that for earthquakes?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. No, this is not for earthquake. This is for our dispatching as the call comes into the fire stations. This system upgrades the technology. We have a system at Station One, which is twenty-five-plus years old, and we are having difficulty when it does have mechanical error fixing it. And Station Two, it doesn't, isn't using the latest technology. So this system will bring both the fire stations to a very modern technology. Dispatcher types in, so a nine-one-one call is made. Currently, a dispatcher types in information into a computer screen. The computer recommends what resources are dispatched. At the end of typing in that information, the dispatcher then sends voice notification to the fire station. That's, that's usually about a thirty to sixty-second time period. The new system uses some software, which is, is, as the dispatcher's typing in, the system recognizes which units to send and it gives an automatic tone to pre-alert. We anticipate anywhere from fifteen to thirty seconds of, of time saved in our response.
That's what I wanted to hear. And that fifteen or thirty seconds is really critical seconds, you know, when you're in need. So, that's beautiful. That's technology again, you know, making things better. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the kiosks. So I'm, I'm kind of surprised about using a kiosk when everyone has their own phone. Like, why wouldn't it just be an online system, like in the cloud? Why do we need a standalone kiosk when we could have iPads or something? Because I'd rather go, I'd rather go with the system upgrade rather than, because kiosks seem to me a dated functionality.
So maybe the terminology was incorrect. It would be like an iPad.
Okay. So you're, is it like a non, a cloud-based program? Is that what you're looking to do?
So it would be hosted by the, by the vendor.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be hosted by the city.
Why do we need a, an outsourced vendor, an outside vendor to host a?
So he, he's, this vendor will, again, it's the same vendor that developed the net promoter score surveys.
Okay.
And, and so the, the vendor is actually going to be developing the surveys.
So it's just surveys?
And the, the surveys will be going directly to the vendor's database. And the vendor will allow us to have real-time access through a log-on and also present monthly reports to us.
Joe, on, on bullet items two and three there, I don't know if I heard you wrong or if I'm processing this wrong, but I kind of got the impression that we were going to pay six hundred thousand dollars to relieve one-point-two million dollars over the next twenty-five years. I'm looking at that, you know, you're taking a fifty thousand dollar a year charge and you're going to throw with six hundred thousand up front. I think you could invest that a lot easier and make that back. Maybe, maybe I heard that wrong, but.
So there's, the total unfunded liability for police is about fifty-four million dollars. And that's made up of various line items with various amortization dates. The two specific line items that we're addressing have a twenty-five-year amortization basis and a twenty-six-year. And with that, anything over twenty-two years has what's called negative amortization. So even though you're making annual payments towards it, it keeps, it keeps growing. So by paying this off, you can consider six eighty-three the principal amount, and then the one million, one hundred and twenty thousand would be the interest payments that if you didn't pay this off, you would be paying over the next twenty-six years.
So a million dollars total over twenty years is fifty thousand a year, you know, ballpark here. And I'm going to pay six hundred thousand dollars today to save fifty thousand dollars a year? Am I missing something here?
I think it's a little bit more than that. It's late in the evening. So you could take the one million, one hundred and twenty thousand and divide that by twenty-six years. That would be, sorry, I have to get my calculator out.
Well, just big round, even if it's fifty grand a year, I can, if I invested six hundred and eighty thousand dollars at some modest interest rate, I'd probably generate more than fifty thousand dollars a year, so. Maybe not, but ten percent, you know.
Yes. Yeah, it's, so for the PD recommendation, it's about forty-four thousand a year. And then the Fire Classic, you're probably looking more at about forty, thirty-nine, forty thousand here. So combined, a little over eighty thousand. It'd be the equivalent, you know, paying down your mortgage portion of it earlier.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's a big chunk of money coming out of the general fund today to, to pay down forty thousand a year. So I think that money might be better used to, used in other places, to be honest with you.
Generally, our rate of return on investment, general fund dollars is about one percent. Our, our rate of return, we hope, with some risk, but we hope, in the PARs fund, is about five to six percent. Paying it off now, you get rid of the risk of getting a lower return.
I don't think returns are going to get lower in the future, but.
So is there nothing else? There's no other initiatives, you know, throughout the city that we wanted to, that are a priority? I know we're working on the website. Do we have enough, is the funding that we had set aside enough to accomplish that?
I believe we have, Charles and I discussed, I believe there's about two hundred and fifty thousand set aside for the website. I don't know if that's enough or not.
I just would hate to see some of our initiatives, you know, if we don't have enough funding, we could use some of this extra to ensure that those, the ones that we identified as hyper need to be completed.
So I, I think we are being conservative. We, we are really just programming here the excess revenues that we've built in. What we haven't programmed are what we expect to be potentially a couple million dollars in salary savings throughout the end of the year.
And this additive?
That, those were our additional savings that we'll realize at the, at the end of the year regarding the web, the website, citywide website. We have the proposals in. I don't want to get into a lot of detail, but between the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and salary savings in the IS department, I think we're, we're in good shape for the website.
Mayor, there's a couple of sidewalks that I want to see get installed on the west side of town to provide safe paths to Richmond Street School. And either at this juncture or at the end, like Greg was just talking about, I want to find a way, Ken Berkman's aware of these projects, to fix that. Before I go into that any further, I've heard you say a number of times, a city's total liability with PERS was a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. Now, we've taken some steps already, and if we were to take these steps, have you been able to recalculate that, how much it would lower that hundred and thirty-four million dollar liability?
Yeah, so lower, if, if, with these recommendations, about one-point-nine million, so these recommendations with the prior approvals that already occurred.
Would, would take it to where then?
So, one-point-nine, so this is say, two million, so it'd go from one-thirty-four to about one-thirty-two.
That's not a good investment.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah.
You're taking a million bucks off the table today to, it's, I just, that doesn't seem right. Like, it's worth, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather see there's a million things that came out of that Parks and Rec survey that need money more than.
Yeah, like, like, let's make, fix Jocelyn Center or.
Teen Centers and other places.
Every time we, we send these windfalls to PERS or Sacramento, we're sitting here with a lot of projects, like Mike's just mentioning, and I just mentioned with the sidewalks, that really need to be done to make the city even better. And we're taking away the means by, by doing this. It's a matter of degree, I think. And I would like to see you, and I know you've got the elements of this, publish a list of everything we've done in the last ten years to address the PERS liability. The tiers, the employee association contributions, there's so many steps. We've taken through the pension study group. I need to get all that rounded up and collected, because the can's not going to be kicked anymore. It got kicked to us. And the longer it gets kicked, the harder it is to, you know, respond to it and put a dent in it. But there's got to be some kind of balance between things we need here in this city in the next few months and shipping money, you know, into a special account or to Sacramento. And, you know, I'm very big on addressing the pension thing as much as all of you are. So, a little frustrated by everything being recommended to go there.
Do we want to talk about maybe putting some of the money into the Parks and Recs and I'll give it, give it back to the?
I comment here before we, I think it would be crazy regardless of the return. We're not going to get a better return than one percent. We haven't historically. Why wouldn't we pay down the only debt that we have outside of Douglas Street? I mean, if our, if the economy, if and when the economy turns, this is the only nut that we're required to make. It is not going to be negotiable, negotiable barring Armageddon with Calpers. So we have a huge nut with them. This is an opportunity to continue to reduce that. I think it's financially responsible to pay down this debt. We can get the sidewalks done, I think, anyway, once we revisit the budget through our strategic planning and our, ultimately, our budget. I mean, I understand your point about the, the rate of return, Mike, but I would like to see us, and my question was going to be, can we take more of that million dollars? Forget about the delta we're going to get on the return and pay down more of those negative amortization line items? Because that's, that affects the future of this city more than anything else that we're looking at right now.
Right. Another, another benefit of paying down those negative amortization line items is your future payments. Now, more of that will be applied towards the principal unfunded liability rather than interest.
I, I understand that, but when, when you look at allocating out, you know, a million three there, right? Million two or a million three, and you're going to get a hundred thousand dollars a year out of that in payments.
Eighty thousand.
Yeah, eighty thousand. That's a lot of money going in that's coming out of the general fund that could go to, you know, we, we need upgrades in, you know, the, you know, checkout restrooms, we need Jocelyn Center stuff. There's, there's things that we don't even address and never make it on the list because there's never any money for them. And now you've got some money that comes available to address these issues and we're not addressing them. And, and I, we can afford forty, fifty grand a year going to those pension funds, but we can't afford the two hundred grand or the three hundred grand to fix the, the dang restrooms there, right? So I, there, there's some point where having that capital today and, and getting rid of it is, I don't think that's a wise move. I think that, that cripples us more than it, it really helps us. So that's just my two cents. I don't, I don't think that's a good payout.
Joe, the, the money in the, the one fifteen, review that again. That's, that's trapped in there, right? We can't pull that back later.
Correct. That's, set aside in the trust, but it can be used towards Calpers payment. So if we chose, you know, applied out towards an annual payment, we could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're saying.
I'm okay with the one fifteen thing.
But you're also saying that there, you're anticipating additional funds from, just from the, from the employment's perspective, from the, how much, so, from the salary savings, how much additional?
A conservative estimate of two and a half million dollars.
On top of this, on top of this.
Right. So this is just from, if I can go back.
This is just purely expenses and life and, and revenues.
Correct. So if you, if you go down to the second row.
Yeah.
Adopted revenues, sixty-nine point three million, we're revising that to seventy-two. The row right below that, expenditures were not changing, even though we're anticipating about two and a half million dollars.
Got it.
We were saving that discussion for strategic planning on, on June thirteenth with City Council.
So maybe to, we can put some, you know, at least a million into the unfunded pension liabilities? And then, because we anticipate we're going to have some additional funding available.
We're doing that in the first one.
And at some point, hopefully, Measure C will kick in. I mean, we don't know when.
Yeah, the cumulative effect of these items, plus the prior action that was taken by council, does start adding up, and it really does make an impact, positive impact on the
I move we adopt Joe's recommendations and reevaluate the capital needs for these other projects as part of our strategic planning session in thirty to forty-five days.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Or one? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
So reports, City Manager.
At your last meeting, we had a speaker who brought up the D.R. Horton status. Council asked for a brief update, so Sam Lee will provide a very brief update. We also have Nick Bureau, who's the D.R. Horton representative in, in the audience, if you have any questions for him. I'll ask, also ask Sam to give us a update on the Smoky Hollow, or at least announce the, the Smoky Hollow committee meeting that's scheduled for this week as well.
Mayor, council members, yes, as Greg mentioned, he asked me to provide a report of the D.R. Horton project. The construction's been going on for seven, eight, seventy-eight months now. I'll be providing a, a brief status update on, on where the construction is. And also, in that period, staff's been facilitating meetings with D.R. Horton and the neighbors to discuss some of the concerns from that. And I'll talk about what those concerns are and, and some of the solutions that we've come up with. Real quick, over that seven, eight period, eight-month period, all of the grading is complete. The foundation work for all of the buildings are complete. There was quite a bit of work on the piles and retaining walls that needed a lot of work. As far as the homes, about a third of the buildings. Um, as far as the homes, um, about a third of the buildings, a third of the homes are, um, are all framed up. And, um, um, most of the multifamily, six buildings are, are all framed up. Um, the goal for them is, uh, by June, July, their model units will be complete, and it'll be, um, really open, and then they're gonna start sailing of, selling of those products. And, um, and after those models are, um, are completed, it'll take another year to complete all of the buildings. Um, as far as, um, some of the problems, if you recall, um, a number of people came to council and, and talked about some of the concerns that they, they have about the construction site. Um, I kind of summarized it into four primary areas. Um, the first really was dust, dust control. Um, and, um, DR Horton was, um, heard their concerns. Um, they, they went, um, and brought more water trucks into the site and did a mu- much more, um, uh, effort to, to water down wherever there's grading being done. Um, the dust is no longer a problem because grading is complete and, uh, the streets has been paved and all of the foundation work's been done. Um, the second issue was about noise. At the time, there was quite a bit of noise being created by grading equipment. They were compacting the soil, um, they were driving the pile for the foundation. I think, uh, along with the noise, there was vibration concerns. Um, those concerns, um, are, are gone because the grading's done, but, you know, construction sites do have noise. Um, it's been replaced with framing, with, um, with saws and, and, um, and, uh, the nail guns and whatnot. But, uh, they're, they're good about it, and, and when, um, they know that certain areas of, of neighbors will be impacted more, um, they'll notify them, let them know that there's some work being done to, maybe for three, four hours of the day, that maybe they can be relocated to someplace else or something. But they're communicating with them constantly. The third area of concern was traffic, about specifically, um, trucks. And, um, uh, at the time, you know, Sheldon is a very narrow street. And, um, there's a few other construction sites going on right now, but, um, there were some, um, trucks being routed, um, from Imperial to Sheldon to Walnut into the site. Um, we talked to the neighbors, um, we got together with Public Works, and we've come up with a better route. And I think it's, um, a much better solution. Um, and we've, so we've gotten a lot less complaints from that. Um, the fourth area of concern was really maybe the biggest concern. Um, it was, uh, about damages that, um, they want it fixed. Um, and if you recall, um, the city will, is not in a position to dictate that there were, you know, how to resolve the two parties' differences. Um, but I can tell you that DR Horton has, um, um, went out and got a third-party engineer, um, not the engineer of record who designed all of the, um, sites and whatnot. They got a third-party to look over the damages, and, and they're, they're continuously working with the neighbors to, to get them resolved. Um, the second item that Greg mentioned is, um, I wanted to announce that, uh, the Smoky Hollow Specific Plan Open House will be this Thursday on April 19th. Um, the hours are from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Um, and it'll be at the Big Door Studio at 114 Sheldon Street. Um, and, um, uh, if you can't be there specifically at 6 o'clock, that's okay. Uh, it'll be kind of a moving presentation with kind of breakout sessions about, talking about detailed projects. But, um, the, uh, it'll be kind of, the presentation will occur about every half hour. So if you, if you can only be there, you know, 7:00 or even after that, it'll be fine. You'll be, you won't miss anything, but it'll be continuous. So that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Uh, one more item with the, um, Ken Berkman has received the long-awaited Caltrans permit for the Civic Ghost Highway sign change. Uh, Ken will be sending out letters, um, to every business and property owner along Civic Ghost Highway. Uh, Ken and Barbara Voss and Phelps are working on, on, uh, marketing and an event. Um, we'll have a date that I can announce at the next council meeting, but, uh, we're looking for the first week in June. That concludes my report.
Good job, Ken, congratulations. Thank you, Caltrans. Good job, Dr. Brand. All right, and Edak, city attorney.
Nothing this evening, mayor and council, thank you.
City clerk.
She's been busy.
What's new?
You're probably looking for an update, aren't you?
Yeah.
Um, so you realize that the numbers we have are unofficial at this point. Uh, we have, um, over 700 vote-by-mails and provisional ballots that we're currently, um, vetting to make sure that count them. So on Thursday, the 19th, have Martin and Chapman back in with their ballot counting machine, and we will, ballots that we have. And those ballots are ones that were received, they had to be postmarked April 10th, and we have three days to get, to receive them into the office. And the other is, is provisional, so if someone went to Center Street School but they're registered to vote, or they were supposed to vote at the city, they didn't wanna drive all the way up here, they could've voted at Center instead of coming here. Or, um, they surrendered their vote by mail and actually voted. Various reasons. We have a lot of checks and balances to do before we can...
And will the count be televised?
No, it is in the, um, your conference room where you meet. And it's open to the public, and at 9:00 AM. Um, someone asked, we had 24.7%. It'll probably increase once, well, it will increase a bit, once we count ballots.
24.7, how many, how many voters was that about?
So 2,828 registered voters, either voted by mail or...
Plus these 700 on top of that? Plu- plus another 700?
So the 24.7% doesn't include the, the ballots that we're vetting now.
So that's gonna run it up to 30% or something?
It'll definitely put us over 3,000.
So 3,500 voters equals 24.7%?
No, the 20...
28.28.
28.28 equals 24.7.
So the 700 is 25% of the 28, so it's another 6%, so we'll be about 31%.
And that's not bad for, um, I hate to say that's not bad, but for an election that only has two seats. We usually see the higher...
And a ballot measure.
The three seats and the clerk and the treasurer. And we have 11,416 active registered.
That's it? All right. Our city treasurer's not here this evening. Councilmember Brand.
Just like to thank all the El Segundo voters who, uh, uh, voted yes on C. That was really a great outcome. And, um, it sounds like the turnout's a little higher than we typically get. Maybe my, uh, speeches about posting and voting had a slight impact. Uh, needs to be a lot more, though. Yeah, I think, look forward to the race on Saturday. See if we can get a tune-up there, uh, for the big race I'm gonna do. Been busy, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Prostec.
I just wanna encourage everyone to come out to the race, the Run for Education on Saturday. It will be a great fun event. Um, and that's about it.
And councilmember Dugan?
Pass.
Mayor Protem Boils?
I'll pass, thank you.
Well, I have several things. First of all, at this point, congratulations to Scott Nickel and Chris Pimentel for being elected last week. I also wanna thank our other two candidates, Lance Giroux and Maria Barden. It's critical that we have enough people to have an election. There have been times in El Segundo's past where there weren't enough candidates, and so people were appointed, and I think that's shameful. So I'm really grateful to both of those, to all four candidates for running and giving our voters a, a chance. Also...
There's still 700 uncounted ballots, right?
Right, well, that's what I said at this moment, but we had an election as opposed to appointing people. Our city deserves elections. Thank you to the voters of Measure C. And there's an interesting story about Measure C. We have a lot of really, um, creative people in our town. And while we come up with ideas here, oftentimes, some of the best ideas are given to us and we run with them. And I would say Measure C is one of those ideas. Um, a gentleman who lives in town, who cares deeply about our town, came to me, and I believe he came to a couple of other council members, and that's Brian Simon. And he came forward with this idea to me and said, hey, what about this? What about a preemptive, uh, you know, potential tax, ta- ta- tax measure? And so I asked the city attorney, and I think probably other council members did. And because of his creative idea, now we're looking forward to potentially having $9 million a year more. So the lesson in this is, if you have good ideas, please come to your council members and share them, because we can't come up with all the good ideas by ourselves. So thank you, Brian, and again, thank you for everybody who voted yes. Um, you may have heard, the Los Angeles Times is coming to El Segundo. Very excited, we're grateful to Dr. Patrick Sun Chong for choosing our city again. It's, it's pretty impressive that the newspaper of record for the western part of the United States is gonna be right here in the city where big ideas take off. Also, last week, I was walking through City Hall and I heard my name, and I saw Lieutenant Lehman holding graduation for the Police Department's Citizen Academy. So that was the third class, and Lieutenant Lehman is here. Thank you very much for, for teaching those, and thank you to all of our citizens and our employees who are engaged and could go through the class and learn more about what our police department does. I attended the EVA Airlines groundbreaking with several of my colleagues a couple weeks ago, which was very interesting in addition to the regular groundbreaking with shovels. They also had a ceremony afterwards that was Chinese, it was in Mandarin, and it was very interesting, very cultural, lots of colors and fruit and incense. And I felt very honored to be there and to stay for that. I attended the South Bay City Council's of Government Steering Committee and the LA EDC, um, Southern California Aerospace Council meeting last week. And congratulations to our city manager, Greg Carpenter, our Economic Development Manager, Barbara Voss, our police chief, Bill Whalen, and El Segundo Unified School District Superintendent Melissa Moore. They were inducted as honorary commanders at Los Angeles Air Force Base, so... Oh, and, oh, okay, and I did not know that, Wiesbaden Superintendent Tom Johnstone. So these are critical positions to have that keep the relations and the communications and conversations going between the local stakeholders and Los Angeles Air Force Base. And you haven't said anything about it, but I look forward to hearing more. And then there's one more big event that's coming up, and right now, the date is questionable. There might be two dates, but the big beautiful mural that's gonna be on the DWP tank is gonna, might have two grand openings, I'm not sure. I've heard, and it was in the LA Times, Saturday, April 28th, and potentially Tuesday, May 1st. So stay tuned for the dates, but I wanna thank Mayor Protem Drew Boils. You were really instrumental in getting DWP to fund this mural that's gonna be a destination. John Van Hammersfeld, iconic artist, did the Endless Summer poster. He also did a lot of, uh, artwork for, for, for record albums, John Lennon, um, Jimi Hendrix, just spectacular. And we've seen the artwork, it's gorgeous, and thank you to the DWP for funding this. And I think the city manager and Mayor Protem, you went downtown and you met with DWP, so good work, and we'll stay tuned for when that's gonna be. So with that, we go back to public communications. And C, no, public communications, pardon? Oh, we will adjourn, 10:25.